Yeah, we're ready. Just. All right, I'll ask everybody to sit down. Thank you. We're gonna get started here. All right. Thank you. Welcome to the March 25th, 2025 Millbrae City Council Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:03 PM. And City Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmembers Riley.
Here.
Councilmember Rinaldi.
Here.
Vice Mayor Holliver.
Present.
Mayor Feng.
Here.
All members of City Council and present.
Thank you so much. And for those who are able, would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Please be seated. And we begin tonight's meeting with this ceremonial presentation and proclaiming the month of April 2025 as Celebrate Diversity Month. And we have Youth Advisory Committee Chair, Serene Chang, joining us today, and we'll get to that momentarily. And Councilmember Nguyen, would you like to... Right here, over there. Thanks.
Whereas diversity strengthens our communities by fostering inclusion, understanding mutual respect, April marks Diversity Month, which is founded in 2004 to call on people to recognize and celebrate embracing diversity in hopes of promoting respect, understanding, and inclusion for all. And whereas the United States of America is a nation founded on the ideas of freedom, justice, and equality for all, we are a country built by immigrants, where all are welcome. And whereas America's history has taught us that diversity is the strength of our nation, recognizing and celebrating these differences is essential for fostering a more inclusive and harmonious society. And whereas this is a time to honor and respect the various races, cultures, genders, religions, sexual orientation, and abilities that make up the tapestry of our community. And whereas we must never forget we are and where we came from, this is a time to recognize and reflect upon our unique cultures, backgrounds, and traditions. And whereas celebrating differences and similarities during this month is important as it allows people to gain a rich understanding of one another and appreciate both our differences and similarities. And whereas the city of Millbrae recognizes, appreciates, and calls upon all the members of our community to engage in meaningful dialogue and action towards creating a more accepting community. Now, therefore, we, the members of Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Celebrate Diversity Month.
Thank you very much. And we'd like to have Serene joining us for a few words.
Hello, Millbrae City Council and Mayor Feng. Thank you so much for recognizing diversity. The city of Millbrae Youth Advisory Committee really appreciates this Millbrae City Council celebrating Diversity Month. I believe that it's super important, right? Because ideas are built from multiple different perspectives, multiple different races. And when people come together and bridge and create, you know, great ideas together, then the world will be a better place and more ideas, good ideas, will be pushed out. So I appreciate the City Council for recognizing a Diversity Month in April of 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Serene. Would you please stand us at the podium? Okay, moving on to item number two, which is the Agenda Overview and the Staff Briefing. And with calendar events and report bills and claims, City Manager Tom Williams, would you please?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Tom Williams, City Manager. So some quick updates here. If we move to the first slide, just to let everyone know that we have several commission and committee vacancies. We're going through our annual recruitment. So any resident or business owner who's passionate about making a difference in our community can join one of our nine various commissions and committees. By joining a commission and committee, you'll have the opportunity to influence policies, advise the City Council on key initiatives, gain valuable experience, obviously, about the city, and contribute to a very meaningful way on improvements in our community. The city has nine commissions and committees, each with a unique mission and goal to enhance the city of Millbrae. And all nine are open for applications at this point in time on our website. And just real quick, on the bottom left of the slide, Community Enhancement Advisory Committee, Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, Economic Development Advisory Committee, Park and Recreation Commission, Planning Commission, Senior Advisory Committee, Sister Cities Commission, Youth Advisory Committee, and a new Citizens Oversight Committee that will just meet twice a year to oversee the revenue from the increase in the TOT and the fire assessment. And so anybody that's interested, please visit bit.ly/millbraecom. There's no dot there, so com for commission. So that is bit.ly/m-i-l-l-b-r-a-e-c-o-m for more information. And you can always check our website or contact my office and the City Clerk. Right, next. This is a really a notice to our public. We have a lot of dogs. People love to walk their dogs. But we are getting a significant amount of complaints that people have their dogs off leashes at the parks, and also people using the sports fields as a dog park. And certainly, this is one of those things that if you can't beat them, join them. Obviously, discussions with the City Council and upcoming with our capital improvement program, some of the park improvements, dog parks are something that, you know, our friend, center of the City Council, we have a meeting, our agenda item tonight, on the renovation of Bayside Manor Park, which includes a dog park. But this is really just to notify the public. Please keep your dogs on a leash, be a good neighbor, pick up after your dog. And also, at the sports fields, so Taylor and the elementary schools, dogs are not allowed. And given the amount of complaints that we've received, talking with the Sheriff's Office, we are going to really start to vigorously enforce. And it could be a fine up to $1,000. So we're going to continue to get information out to the public, to be good neighbors to each other, and really monitor their pets. So just a public information announcement on, because we love dogs in Millbrae, of course, but please be responsible. All right, upcoming events, Mayor and City Council. Tomorrow, Wednesday, March 26th, at 1:00 PM, we have a walking tour, for those interested, and hopefully downtown property owners and others that are interested, a walk in the downtown regarding our community benefit district. That is on the agenda tonight as an information item. So I won't go into a lot of detail. But tomorrow, 1:00 PM, at the intersection of Taylor and Broadway, at the plaza at Leonardo's and Bank of the Orient, we will be meeting. Our consultant will be there, city staff will be there to answer questions and tour the area. So everything you want to know about the community benefit district, obviously, this evening on tonight's item, and a walking tour tomorrow, 1:00 PM, at the intersection of Broadway and Taylor Boulevard. All right, next. On Saturday, April 5th, from 10:00 AM to noon, Councilmember Steve Rinaldi will be having his listening forum. So please join District One Representative, Councilmember Rinaldi, for a listening forum on Saturday, again, April 5th at 10:00 AM. It will be held in the Great Room at the Recreation Center. The event's open to everyone in the community, not just District One Representatives. So Mr. Rinaldi, Councilmember Rinaldi, definitely would like to hear from everyone and looks forward to an open discussion. Next slide, please. And then following Friday, Friday, April 11th, at 6:30 PM, Millbrae goes back to the movies. Despicable Me will be showing, and this will start at 6:30 PM, and it will be in the Millbrae Recreation Center in the Great Hall. So Friday, April 11th, 6:30 PM, our movie night, Despicable Me is the movie, and that will be in the Millbrae Recreation Center, Great Hall. And I believe, Mr. Mayor... Oh, one other item, Local Density Bonus Ordinance. So this is an item that the City Council has discussed with the direction to bring the item and have further community engagement. So we do have a Local Density Bonus Ordinance Collaborative Zoom Session, Wednesday, April 16th, from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And we will be providing more notification on that. But people listening and you're interested in our Local Density Bonus Ordinance that we're working on, Zoom Session, Wednesday, April 16th, from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And that concludes a very brief update on what's happening in the city in the next few weeks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Tom, and always keeping the community informed. And wonderful job we're all doing. And also, just so everybody knows, the City Administrative Office sends out Friday updates and also City Manager updates every Friday. You know, it's either one or the other. It's a form of update to a mailing list. Go ahead and please register yourself and to receive these updates so that you will never miss another event that Millbrae has. All right, thank you all. And next item is the approval of minutes for the regular meeting minutes of March 11, 2025. Any council comments or discussions? Love to entertain a motion? We have a motion from Councilmember Rinaldi in a second, from Councilmember Nguyen. Your vote, please.
The meeting minutes of March 11, 2025, passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number four, which brings us to the oral report from City Committees and Commission Chair. And tonight, we have the adoption for the fiscal year 2025 and '27 Sister City Commission Work Plan. And City Manager, I believe we have the Sister City Commission Chair, Kathleen Kimura, joining us. Chair Kimura.
So good evening, Mayor Feng and City Council members. It's a pleasure to be here to report and represent Millbrae Sister Cities Commission. And as you can see, do I press this? This moves? Okay, thank you. As you can see, we, the members of our committee are myself, we have Sammy Yin, Yim as Vice Chair, Aileen Lee, Akiko Soda, Chi Wing Yong Pu, and Yunis Danley, John Chang, John Muniz, and Peter Ye. And we have two vacancies. So we look forward to hearing from community members who would be interested in serving on our commission. The Sister Cities Commission hosted a booth at the 2024 Japanese Culture Festival Committee to promote the commission's history and current relationships with other cities to the community. I took a visit to Hanu, Japan, along with other city representatives in November 2024, at the invitation of Hanu Mayor Komekoata. I was joined by the President of the Millbrae, the Millbrae School District Board of Supervisors, Maggie Musa, her son, and also former Mayor Ann Schneider, joined me. We were hosted totally in hotels and food by the city of Hanu. We all paid our own way there on airplanes. A ceremony was held to officially unveil the Olive Tree Plaque on December 6, 2024. And representatives from both Ramallah, Palestine, and Mostar Malta were in attendance, along with city representatives and City Council members. A notable guest was Dr. Angela Farugia, the leader of the Maltese House of Representatives, who also shared some words. Discussions and meetings took place regarding the Japanese Garden. Concept designs have been shown to the City Council and to the commission, and the project continues to move forward. Payment to keep the website licensing and membership to Sister Cities International was made. The commission also plans to once again be a publicity partner for the San Francisco AAPI celebration in May at no cost. For the next two years, as an ongoing activity, we serve as the recommending body for matters as defined in Resolution Number 1601. Annually, we will conduct an evaluation of programs and events for consideration and recommendation to the City Council. We will collaborate with other committees and commissions as necessary if recommendations coincide. The commission will also reevaluate and strengthen sister city relationships with Lassarena, Chile, Mostar Malta, and friendship city relationships with Hanu, Japan, Taishan, China, Ramallah, Palestine, and Dongguan, China. Reevaluating these relationships will help the commission decide whether to continue or to end with these cities. The Sister City Commission would like to continue the implementation of the Japanese Garden along the spur trail near the area of Magnolia Avenue and Millbrae Avenue. This garden would help recognize the city of Millbrae's relationship with Japan and also provide added enjoyment to those using the spur trail and to the community at large. We want to establish a relationship with Taichung, Taiwan. With the City Council's approval, the commission hopes to build a friendship relationship with the District of Situn, District of Taichung in Taiwan. The Recreation Director will be, I believe, bringing this before the council later this evening. This discussion has been going on with our commission since 2022, and the supervisor of the district in Situn has been our main contact person. And Commissioner John Chang is our lead person on this pursuit. Sister Cities Commission would like to update the materials and information regarding the commission to share with the public. Each year, the commission has a presence at the Japanese Culture Festival to share information about the commission, their relationships, and accomplishments. The pamphlets, photos, and overall information provided for this event are currently very much dated and out of date. The Millbrae Sister Cities Commission wishes to keep their annual membership with Sister Cities International, website licensing, and partnerships with certain events and organizations with the approval of the city of Millbrae. That's all I have, unless you have any questions?
Thank you.
You have the full report. This is just a condensed version.
Yeah, thank you for the, thank you for the 2025 to '27 work plan. Anyone on the council have any questions or comment for Chair Kimura? I think we need to take public comment on this item as well. Do we? I think, I think we should, before the adoption.
Mayor, we do not have any speakers slip on this item, and also no hands are raised online.
Okay, thank you very much. If everything's okay, I'd love to entertain a motion unless anybody have any comments or questions. Okay, so we have a motion from Councilmember Holliver, or Vice Mayor Holliver, and also a second from Councilmember Rinaldi. Your votes, please.
Item number four passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the work at Commissioner Chang and also Commissioner John Muniz, as well as Chair Kimura, for all your hard work. All right. And that brings us to the next item from public communication. This is the portion of the agenda reserved for those who wish to comment on item not on tonight's agenda. However, speaker must address subject matter within the jurisdictions of the City Council. Every speaker will have three minutes, and the speaker is to address directly to the entire council, not individual members of the council, nor the public. We will start with the in-chamber speaker and then move on to online speaker after. We will start tonight's public comment with Mr. Michael Kelly.
Evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. What a treat to be back in Millbrae. My name's Michael Kelly. Used to live here for a long time. I currently now still volunteer here with the Millbrae Leos Club. I've been with the Millbrae Lions Club for the last 10 years. Mayor Lyon Anders and I are in about the same amount of time. City Manager Lyon Tom's been serving longer than either of us. But we're here tonight, I'm here tonight, to talk about this really incredible partnership between the Leos and the city of Millbrae, city government, city staff, local business, and the community. Since 2020 and the pandemic, the Leos have been recycling stretch film plastic. And they kept over 14,000 pounds of this plastic, which breaks down into microplastics, incredibly dangerous and damaging to health and the environment. They kept that out of landfills and sent it to get park benches from a company called Trex. And a bunch of those benches have been installed on the spur trail and other places in Millbrae. Where we're at now is, for the last two and a half years, the Leos did fundraising. They gathered $26,000 together by face painting and selling snacks and volunteering for various events. And they bought an industrial baler and paid for the installation and donated this baler to the city of Millbrae. That was purchased in March of this year. In May, it went live. In June, we had the first bail created. In September, Mayor Anders was there. We had a ribbon cutting ceremony at the water treatment facility. It was spectacular. And we couldn't yet get started. We couldn't have the community bringing in plastic. The city was still negotiating with South San Francisco Scavenger. That completed in November, and that was four months ago. So the baler has basically been idle for four months. The Scavenger organization has bins ready for us. We've been working on a very positive relationship with City Manager Tom. He has concerns about, hey, if we put the bins out there, it could lead to illegal dumping. That's never happened when the Leos have collected plastic. They sift and sort it and manage that process. We've proposed, hey, let's get locking lids. Let's make sure the Leos and a responsible adult are there and will be attendants. We'd love to see these bins from Scavenger near the rec center. The cyclone fencing would be great. It's important to realize that our city of Millbrae, 23,000, the Leos Club here punches so over its weight class. It is 220 active members from middle school and high school. It's the largest Leos Club in the world, in the world, in Millbrae. They are, they've won the award for top club and top project for North America for this baling project. And we're sitting idle for months because the community cannot bring the plastic anywhere. I heard from Andrea Papajon, I'll wrap up in 10 seconds. She said Wednesdays from 7:30 to 3:30, the community can bring your plastic to the water treatment. So, no, but everyone's working and can't get there at that time.
Michael, thank you, please. I just want to make sure everybody respect the time. Thank you. All right. Kylie Van Nook and Matthew Lee, please.
Hi all, my name is Kyle Van Nook. I have been a resident of Millbrae for 15 years. I have gone to Taylor Middle School and Mills High School. And I have been a member of the Leos for four years now. And as of right now, I am the projects director. So I work directly with all the Leos who work at our events. And I would like to say that the partnership between the Leos and the city of Millbrae has just been phenomenal. We have received so much support, and we have also contributed so much to this community. Absolutely love for that to continue. And our primary concern is that our project is not being allowed to continue. However, we feel that we are absolutely capable of preventing the issues that the city sees with our projects. I know that the Leos that we work with, well, we are only in middle school. We have already completed projects on behalf of the city and on behalf of our community that show that we have the capability to work within the constraints that we have. For example, we have already processed over 10,000 pounds of plastic. And we know that the Leos are able to sort trash, and we do not have issues with illegal dumping because in the past, we specifically filtered our plastic with Leos who had proper safety. we specifically filtered our plastic with Leos who had proper safety equipment and proper training to be able to handle those issues.
Hello, everyone. My name is Matthew Lee. I'm also a projects director for the Milbury Leos Club. And what caught my eye was this sign right here where it says, "Help us build a sustainable Milbury." And I feel like our project, the Plastic Baler Project, to help transport these plastics and to help it, um, get it out of our community is a great way of, you know, fulfilling this, uh, dream and fulfilling this, um, goal of you guys have here of building a sustainable Milbury. And I feel like us Leos being the best Leos Club for the past four years is a great, you know, factor in how you guys can trust us to run this project smoothly, correctly, and that we won't have any illegal dumping, as Lion Michael said. And I feel like the relationship that we have with you guys in the city of Milbury, if we work together and get this project going, we could, like I said, help us build a sustainable Milbury, I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And next up, we have Enrique Zhang and also Samantha Nguyen.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Enrique, and I'm a director of the Milbury Leos Club. I'm here to speak about the project that has the power to transform our community, the Plastic Baler Project. For years, we've worked tirelessly to make this initiative into reality. We've collected stretch film plastic from our community and local businesses that would have otherwise landed in landfills. Instead of this waste, we process the plastic and send it to Trex for reuse as a resin-based outdoor construction material. This doesn't just keep plastic out of landfills, however. It also generates funds that go right back to supporting our community. We're at the final step. We have the machine. We have the plan. But we have not been able to operate because we lack a community space for the plastic. We had our baler ribbon cutting six months ago, but we still sit idle. I am here to ask, how can we get our city manager and Department of Public Works to designate a site to place the collection bins? We know illegal dumping might be a problem, but it never has been for our project. We aren't asking for money. We aren't asking for any special treatment. We're asking for the city of Milbury to complete this one last step, which will open the gates towards a cleaner, brighter Milbury. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Samantha Nguyen. I am a board member on the Milbury Leos Club. I'm here to advocate for approval on our Plastic Baler Project. For the past five years, all Leos have been working endlessly to organize plastic to recycle. Finally, after fundraising money, we bought our very own baler. However, we currently cannot use it because we can't collect plastic from the community. This situation has truly frustrated our club. Because of this problem, many eager Leos, ready to help serve their community, have not been able to. We need your help to get the attention we need to start our project so that we can continue to help our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the comment. Next up, we have Finn Nolan and Theo Nolan, please.
Um, good evening, city council. Uh, my name is Finn Nolan. I'm a general member with the Milbury Leos Club. Um, I actually joined a couple of years ago in the Plastic Work Party and Plastic Baler Project. We're just getting started. And I can say that this is truly an incredible project for our community. Um, so I've been there to multiple events where the Leos have sorted plastic and baled that into, um, plastic trash bags and taken that to the baler. I've been there for the ribbon cutting. And I've seen how much this event has impacted our Leos and our community. Um, so this event, we're given an opportunity, not only to mitigate environmental damage, but also for the youth to be shown that they can make a difference in this world. I think this is an incredibly important project in that regard, um, that we can all see that we are able to make a difference or able to do something with our own hands that can better the environment, that can better our community. And that's why I think it is of vital importance that we are allowed to continue with our project and have the community drop off plastic at the facility. Thank you. Evening, city council. Mayor Fang, I'm Theo Nolan, Nolan's brother. I've also been in the Leos Club for a few years, and I'm a general member. And I just want to talk about the impact that this club has had on me, allowing me to serve my community and really get the gratification for doing it and to help the community. And everything has been an amazing journey for me these past couple of years. I want to touch that we are the world's largest Leos Club, over two hundred active members, and we really do need initiatives like this to keep our momentum going. This is the lifeblood of our club. It's the way forward through environmentalism. We really do care about helping the environment through this project, and I really hope that we can get things going again on the Plastic Baler. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Warren Shu next.
Hello, everybody on the board. Um, when I joined the Leos Club four years ago, I transferred student from the Burlingame School System. I went to Milbury. When I got to know everyone at Mills for the first time, knowing almost nobody, I could say that Mills was one of the kindest schools to ever offer me, such a warm feeling every single day at that school. And when some of my friends there that I first made asked me to join the Milbury Leos Club at a meeting, I had no idea what it was. I had no idea what an impact it would have on my life and what the next four years of my life would be serving with them. And during these four years, I have had the most memorable experiences. I have worked with them so hard alongside Lion Michael Kelly. He's given us so much, um, advice and what to, on how to just be great leaders within our club, within our community. And we've already talked about the details. Uh, I think you guys know kind of what we're looking for, and we just want to continue cooperating. We just want to continue working. And with this event, we'll have continuous times where our largest active Leos Club can continue, oh, I want to move this up a little bit, um, can continue working, and we can just continue to serve the district as much as we can. We have just put so much effort into this project. I, me alongside our old projects director, Jimmy Guan, we started this project together. We brought this up to Lion Michael, and we brought this up to our vice president and, uh, president at the time. And since then, we've just come so far in this project, and I just can't, um, wait to see it continue. And as I leave this senior, as I'm a senior, I, when I leave this year, I just want to see that my club has continued the work that we strive to do together and with the most passion, as I know every single one of my Leos in the club have. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Next, next up, we have Mary Ancon.
Dear council members, I want to bring to your attention, last Friday, I read a news article that stating that city of San Francisco is using their meter parking to raise rate to offset their budget losses. And then I know our city is talking about meter parking. And I just want you all who are sitting behind that long table there to really watch out, uh, to really watch for us about how to, how not to, how not to have a rate increase to, to backfill the losses of the city. Because I think you all there should bear a very, very important, uh, important mission. It's try to find money and then try to benefit the city. Okay, so I just want to caution you, and then, um, it, it's, um, it's a, it's a very disturbing news that I heard, I read on the news. Then I'm talking about my street. My street have been there since two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. I requested repavement and never happened. And the public work keep telling me next year, next year, next year. And this year, now telling me it's two thousand thirty. And then I have no idea what two thousand thirty, and I have no idea the sixty-seven years old street with all the, uh, all the tarts on the street, they all chip it out. And then why, why, um, our public were not paying attention? And then I'm looking for my city representative, my council member, to fight for us. Okay, and then I appreciate, uh, another council member, District Street, actually inquiry about the lighting at the Victoria Street. I really appreciate that. Thank you so much. Keep out the good word because it's benefit entire business district. It benefit everybody who comes to the Milbury to spend money. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. And I believe that's all the speaker slip I have. Uh, city clerk, would you please call on the online speaker?
Certainly, Mayor. Uh, the first speaker is Anne Snyder. Please accept the unmute.
Thank you, and good evening. Tonight, I represent the city of Milbury at the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency. For our new folks, and because we don't always get updates from Bosque, Bosque Board meets every other month, and then the policy committee meets in the intermediary months. Last week, San Francisco Public Utility Commission, which owns, San Francisco owns our water district. And then the twenty-four cities and water districts pay approximately sixty percent of the maintenance and costs of the water system. SFPUC came to the board meeting last week and presented their, an update on their ten-year capital improvement plan. And one of the main functions or parts of that presentation was the sale of some of their land on Rollins Road in Burlingame and the movement of those laboratories to the city of Milbury or to their operations in the city of Milbury. And then, uh, they're planning on taking the building that the outdoor hardware supply is in and Kentucky Fried Chicken, et cetera, and converting that into, um, a workshop, a maintenance shop in that area. I had thought that they were giving us another couple of years, but Steve Ritchie, the general manager, said that the lease extension with OSH will go for one month. I had spoken to the city manager prior to that meeting on what the city's positions could, should be. And the city manager suggested that I present last week with SFPUC to do a cost-benefit analysis or frankly, move most of their operations up to the Harry Tracy Water Plant, which you can access from the top of Helen Drive or from the San Bruno side. The, I'm bringing this up now so that you know, uh, I hope the city manager has more specifics on when the last date of keeping outdoor hardware supplies open, basically a one-year extension in their lease. And when that is converted, or should it be converted, it is a loss of property tax, sales tax, local jobs, and local shopping opportunities. So I can get this on the policy committee, which meets on April ninth, but it would be great if city council, I'm not sure there's enough time, but could send a letter of concern to the Bosque Board, um, as the city of Milbury, asking for, uh, whatever you all deem as important. To me, I think that commercial property is terribly important to the city. But just know that it's on a timeline now. Also know that Bosque cannot vote on SFPUC's capital improvement plan. It is actually approved by the San Francisco Planning Commission.
Thank you, Anne. Yeah, thank you for the update, Anne. Uh, next speaker.
The next speaker is iPhone. Please go ahead and accept the unmute and also state your name for the record.
Hi, good evening. This is Alice Kong. Is anyone hear me?
We're here. You're just fine. Go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you. First of all, uh, my subject is talking about the CBD. CBD is full name is a Community Benefit District.
So, so this is the public comment. If you want to comment on the community benefit district, it is the, um, item number fourteen, which can come a little later.
Hello, hello, but now I have a question. In the board of the five of our council and mayor, how many of you have been directly to talk to New City American, the CEO?
Can we reserve this? Can we reserve this for item number fourteen? You'd be more than happy to come back, and we'll give you the full three minute then.
I am in, I'm in Portugal now. I'm window at midnight, two P, two AM.
So we have item number fourteen that's coming up, and then, um, we'll make sure everybody have equal amount of time.
I just want to make sure, Mayor, you are very good in Chinese. Can you fully to read the petition form in Chinese without make any sense for our citizens? And please do. And also, we have another fully very good in Chinese, another council. Please read all those paperwork in Chinese translation. If anything considered is incorrect and misleading our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the comment. City clerk, next one, please.
The next speaker is, um, Angelina Cahalan. Please accept the mute.
Good evening. Yes, my name is Angelina Cahalan, and I have the gift and honor of being an advisor with the amazing Leos that you heard speak tonight, a larger group. They have started this work five years ago, and the Leos support the community, and the community supports the Leos. When this project began, the goal was to collect enough plastic to make one bench. The community came out in full force, and in, I believe, a year, they collected enough plastic for a dozen benches. I know there's concerns about garbage and being put into our, into our dumpster that's designated for the bags. But I believe the community would support and protect this and look out for it. Even though we haven't had a space to drop plastic for several years, I know people all across our city that have bags and bags of plastic in their garbage because they are just waiting, uh, to support this program and to make sure that they're protecting the environment and making Milbury sustainable and, and supporting the Leos in this incredible project. So I really, um, you know, we've made so much progress along the way, working together, step by step, slowly but surely. But again, like so many have said already, we're at that very last step. And if we can work with Sunset Scavenger, sorry, South City Scavengers, they have been ready for us. All we need is the location, the proper, um, labeling on it, messaging in the community, and all I see is success. And so I hope that you'll work to support our Leos and the entire Milbury community that has been a part of this project and wants to keep it going. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cahalan. Um, any other speaker, city clerk?
We do not have any other speaker for this, uh, communication.
Okay, thank you very much. So that brings an end to the public communication tonight. Moving on to consent calendar, we have item number five to item number thirteen. Item number five is receive and file monthly general fund financial report for the period ending February twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-five. Item six, adoptions of a resolution approving applications for the State of California General Fund, specified grant, specified grant for the Basai Manor Park renovation project and the Marina Vista Park renovation project. Item seven, approved by motion and request from the Milbury, from the Milbury Lions Club for parking lot and street closures and fee waivers for the Milbury Machine Car Show on August sixteen, two thousand twenty-five. Item eight, approved by motion and request from Milbury Cultural Committee for parking lot and street closures and fee waivers for the Mid-Autumn Festivals on September twenty-seven to twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-five. Item number nine, approved by motion and request from the American Cancer Society for the use of Milbury Central Park Fitness Center and a fee waiver for the Relay for Life of North Peninsula on September, um, thirteen, two thousand twenty-five. Item number ten, approved by motion and request from the Japanese Cultural Festival Committee for parking lot closure, the use of jacuzzi room and a library meeting room A and B and fee waiver for the Japanese Cultural Festival that is going to happen on February fifth, two thousand twenty-five. Item number eleven, approved by motion and request from the Milbury Chamber of Commerce for parking lot and street closures and fee waiver for the Autumn Wine Festival that is going to happen on August thirtieth to thirty-first. Approved by motion and request from the Rotary Club of Milbury for the use of Rotary Park and fee, a fee waiver for the Kids Carnival on October twenty-sixth. And then approved by motion and request from the Milbury Chamber of Commerce for street closures and fee waiver for the holiday, for holiday tree lighting on December sixth, two thousand twenty-five. And that, for the most part, wrapped up for the full year, you know, events, um, that we plan out for the rest of the year. So does anyone want to pull any item from this agenda? Vice Mayor?
Yes, can I just make a brief comment? I don't want to pull anything off of consent, but, um, I know we're approving.
Sorry, can we just make sure that no one pull any item, and then we can go to council comment? Is that okay? Anyone? So nobody want to pull it? Okay, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, just a brief comment.
Thank you.
I know we have several different community events, which are all great events. Can we just make sure that we're working with, um, the organizations putting on these events, that all of the vendors are, make sure that either they're licensed or they're providing, um, you know, sales tax? The city is able to collect that sales tax from each of these vendors because it's a fair amount of city expense. The city is able to collect that sales tax from each of these vendors because it's a fair amount of city expense to put these events on. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any public comment on this item at all?
Mayor did not receive any speaker slips and there's no hands raised online.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion if anybody wants to make one. Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Duane and a second from Vice Mayor Holliver. Your votes, please.
The consent calendar passed by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you very much. And public hearing today, and we don't have any. And then move on to existing business, which is the informational presentation regarding the proposed Millbrae Downtown and El Camino Real Community Benefit District. City Manager?
Thank you, Ms. Mary. I'd like to introduce our Community Development Director, Mr. Andy Mogensen, for the staff presentation. We also have our consultant from New City America that will also be providing a briefing to the City Council this evening. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm going to hand over the presentation to Marco Lamandri of New City America. He's going to be explaining tonight how the Community Benefits District works, how the balloting works, how the petition process would work. And with that, I'm going to hand this over to Marco. Marco, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Been speaking to the City Council Millbrae, I think, since 2018 about this project. We started doing an investigation. I'll give you a little background on New City America. I know a lot of people have comments about it, but I'm a native Californian, born and raised in San Diego. Got into this business about business improvement districts and community benefit districts because I was a food manufacturer and I moved into one of these districts. Company closed in 1993. We had five kids and I said, what do I know how to do? Well, I happened to be a president of one of these smaller business improvement districts in an area called Normal Heights in San Diego. Long story short, we started in 1995. We worked all throughout the state of California, understanding what the law is, what the law allowed. Back in 1995, the only business improvement districts that were allowable were ones that were a supplement on business licenses. In 1994, the state legislature adopted a new part of the streets and highway code that allowed for property assessments to fund special benefits. What are special benefits? There's those services that are over and above what the city or the county is currently providing. So started going on that track and working in a number of different cities. We've just formed 98 districts. We'll form our 100th district within about two months. Wrote the Community Benefit District Ordinance in San Francisco in 2004. They have 18 of these districts there now. Helped to write the Oakland Ordinance in 1998 and they have about 17 districts in Oakland now. So we are really based in San Diego and we are, we run eight districts statewide, so I have a pretty good understanding of how this is done. Our keynote district is the Little Italy District in downtown San Diego. If anybody's been to downtown San Diego, they might have been to Gaslamp, they might have been to Little Italy. And I just recently stepped down as a CEO with the Little Italy Association. It's an extremely successful business improvement district or community benefit district. During COVID, we had about, when I first started, we had 13 Italian restaurants and stores in 1995. Up to 85 now. We didn't lose one restaurant or cafe during COVID. And I find that that's the most important thing that I've done, at least in my career, is keeping people alive and making sure that these small businesses could survive. I met Mr. Williams a few years ago. We started the discussion about Millbrae and this was before COVID. And Millbrae was clearly at the center in a lot of ways of the world. SFO is a stone's throw away, where Caltrain, eventually maybe the Bullet Train, but Caltrain and Bart meet in Millbrae. Did a little bit of research and there's about 1.2 million people in a 10-mile radius from Millbrae. Peninsula is coming back pretty quickly. And I've worked all throughout the peninsula, worked in San Jose, did the Redwood City Business Improvement District, Community Benefit District in 2013, and they've really taken off particularly with residential in their downtown. So when we started this work, we did a lot of, you had nothing really south of Millbrae Avenue for all intents and purposes compared to what's there right now. Worked in 2018, 2019, and 2020, we just had to stop because COVID was stopping everything in the state of California, if not nationwide. So Tom and I continued to just talk. We kept in touch and about, I think it was a year ago, I started working with Tom and Andy on looking to see if there was support for this. We have a unique way that we're approaching this right now. The bottom line is, is this is a special benefits district. So the city is providing services right now on Broadway, now Camino Real, and Millbrae Avenue, et cetera. But it doesn't do the same. It does those things in downtown, but I just heard about all the community organizations and community events that want things to happen. I don't have to tell you, you have a limited budget. Flew out of San Diego today. They have a quarter billion dollar deficit beginning July 1. City of LA has a billion dollar deficit and a lot of it has to do with the ARPA money and the fact that cities got used to the ARPA money and it's no longer there. So how do you accommodate the fact that your downtown is going vertical extremely quickly? As I said, when I first worked here, everything that's now south of Millbrae Avenue isn't, wasn't there. And you see what's going on at the Old Office Depot and you see what's going on in the high tech as well as the lab space that you were looking at. There's just so much activity here and it was really stunning when I came back and I began working here again, just evolving the development. Well, more development means more people, more development means more residents, more development means people are looking for a place to go get something to eat, to walk around. You have a really attractive and really the ambiance here is wonderful. It's not great coming from the Bart Station at this point and coming up to El Camino Real, but all that will change soon. So the Community Benefit District is basically an opportunity for property owners. And in the state constitution, nobody's exempt. That's the way the Jarvis people wanted it when they proposed Proposition 218, which was approved by the voters in 1996. You have a lot of public entities that are in your downtown in El Camino Real at this point. It includes the city, it includes Bart, SFO, as well as the PUC of San Francisco. None of those entities would be exempt. They would have to pay just like any other property owner. So we've come up with a plan and the plan, and I'll walk you through this PowerPoint down here, Andy. Next slide and that's, that's where it is? Okay. So I'm going to have to turn a little bit. I don't mean to turn my back to you, but I want to see where. Oh, right here. Okay. Thank you. So the establishment, the management district plan is distributed, has been distributed to all property owners within the boundaries of the district. We mailed that out. There were 600 packages that went out in English and in Chinese. We, everything we've done here has been bilingualy. The petition must be signed based upon the plan and the services that are being promoted by 30% of the property owners by dollar amount. So if the district is, let's say, $700,000, you would need property owners representing $210,000 to sign a petition to get to the balloting process. If the petitions are successful, the City Council would adopt a resolution of intention expressions, intention to form the district and would probably happen in a meeting in May. And then the notice hearing ballot is mailed out to all the affected property owners. It's based upon majority protest, so if the return ballots by dollar amount are in support of the formation of the district, it goes forward. If the return ballots are opposed to it, it stops and it doesn't happen anymore. So this is really up to the property owners to make that determination. Next slide, please. The assessment is limited right now to 691 parcels in the district. The district would be led by a new board of directors, which would be a nonprofit corporation, most likely set up as a 501(c)(3). And they would be elected by the property owners in the district. And the district would serve as the Business Improvement Association, which is also known as, in this term, the Owners Association. Next slide. The five factors that are used because you can't use assessed valuation in the state of California for assessments because of Prop 13. If I bought a parcel 30 years ago, same linear frontage, lot size and building square footage as the person next door to me and they bought it two years ago, they're paying a lot more in property taxes. So you can't use assessed valuation. You have to use what each has in common. It's linear frontage, lot size, building square footage and the location of the parcel in either benefit zone one or two. And we also have current and future condominiums. I know there's some discussion about condominiums. The, all the parcels within the proposed district would be paying on the basis of those three assessments. Condos would only pay for building square footage. And the building square footage, if I'm not mistaken, is 12 cents per square foot for benefit zone one. Excuse me, 10 cents per square? Next slide. Thank you. You're way ahead of me. Zone one is 10 cents per square foot. So if you have 1,000 square foot parcel or a 1,000 square foot condo, you pay $100 a year. It would be on the property tax bill. Zone two would be 8 cents per square foot for condos. And you can see in the slide, the building square footage constitutes 50% of the overall district. In terms of revenue, lot size, 25% and linear frontage, 19%. Residential condos are a very small part of this, but I assume that there will be, continue to be. If we look at the Old Office Depot site, those will be apartments, some will be apartments, some will be condos. They'll all derive the benefit from the cleaning, pressure washing, sweeping of the public rights of way as well as development of public spaces. Next slide. This is a map and we showed benefit zone one and two. Benefit zone one is the white outlined area and benefit zone two is the orange area. And the reason why you have the two benefit zones is that people who are in the core are going to derive the greatest benefit. This is where most of the activities occur. If you go to Broadway and Hillcrest, that's really kind of like the heart of the downtown. So the people that are on the periphery, particularly across the freeway, they would be assessed, but they would be assessed at a lower level. Next slide. So we have 691 parcels and 608 property owners. About $4 million in gross building square footage, 52,000 in linear feet. That's almost 10 miles, almost 7 million in gross lot square footage and almost 500,000 square feet in residential condo building square footage. Next. The proposed assessments at this point would be $742,000. Public agencies, you can see the City of Millbrae would be almost $40,000 in annual contributions. The Water Department of San Francisco, almost $34,000, Bart about 13,600. And then SFO, because they all own property within the boundaries of the district, would be about 8,500. The mean average assessment is $1,074 per year. The meeting assessment is 139,84. And the most common assessment is $91.76. That's not per day. That's next, next slide. So the categories of services, what would, what would this district do? Civil sidewalks, as we call safety and cleanliness, would be 60% of the budget, about $445,000. District identity, if you look at the civil sidewalks, that's more defensive. It's cleaning it up, taking care of trash, the sidewalks, if there's ever any graffiti, if there's happened to be any dumping in the areas or if there are problem areas, civil sidewalks deals basically with curb to property line. District identity is, how does the world, how do those 1 million people in a one-point, excuse me, in a 10-mile radius, how do they know about what's going on in downtown Millbrae? Do they just drive off the freeway and look at it themselves or do you market and promote it? We've been pretty successful in our major district in Little Italy. We have over 100,000 Facebook followers, over 90,000 Instagram followers. And whenever we do events now, it's, it's a button. It used to be a poster in a window, it used to be faxes or other types of flyers. Now it's simply hitting a button. So district identity would deal with public space development, walkability of the area, signage, as well as marketing promotion, as well as public relations. The administration and contingency would be 20% and that has to do with, you need an office, you're going to need insurance, you're going to need staff in order to oversee this and working for the corporation. And the total first year budget is $742,000. Next. So this is the pie chart. You can see that civil sidewalks, safety and cleanliness takes the overwhelming majority of the district. Civil sidewalks and district identity and place making constitute 80% of the overall district. 20% is for management of that district as well as a contingency. Next. The assessment rates increases are subject to approval of the District Owners Association and approval by resolution of the City of Millbrae. Some people have said it's going to go automatically up 5% a year. We have an accommodation for that because we know what happened during COVID. Inflation was pretty strong, minimum wage went up, insurance rates are going up, water is going up. There's got to be some way, if everything stayed exactly the way it was, to try to increase the budget on an annual basis. Any recommendations would come from the Board of Directors, the new corporation, to the City Council because the City Council must approve the budget going into the following year. By law, the assessment rate increases are capped at a maximum of 8% a year. I don't see it ever going to that, but because of what we've experienced for the last five years, want to make sure that people have that opportunity. They could go up by 1%, 2% or 0% on an annual basis. The basis for the annual increase, I just went over all those, vehicle insurance cost, minimum wage, et cetera. And the new development brings in new revenues, which will be offsetting increases. The district right now is at, Zone one is at 10 cents per square foot. So let's say that someone builds 100,000 square foot building. That building square footage would add an extra $10,000 into the district. So in many ways, there might not be a need to increase it annually because the new development will bring in more revenue into the district. Next. The services would be regular sidewalk sweeping, gutter sweeping, steam cleaning of the sidewalks, beautification, timely graffiti removal within 72 hours. If the city is doing graffiti removal, then the district doesn't have to do it. But I'm sure you have other issues throughout the rest of the city that need to be dealt with too. Maintenance of existing and new public spaces that are not part of the City of Millbrae's responsibilities. Installation and maintenance of hanging plants, flowers throughout the district. Personnel to manage the in-house or contracted maintenance and private security and homeless outreach workers. Next. So these are some examples of in other areas where we have these ambassadors. They're done in San Leandro, they're done all that. You go to San Francisco, you see all these people in these vests walking around. These people are not paid for by the City of San Francisco. They're paid for by the property owners within that area. And I've done the Tourism Improvement District, Tenderline, Castro Noe Valley, Fisherman's Wharf, all these different districts. They're all different, they all have different needs and they all have different desires. Next. This is not our Little Italy, this is the Little Italy in San Jose, but it shows you how they all have their own branding and they all have their own mechanism for promoting the district. Next. I wanted to show you some of the things that can be done then with the district and we, Andy and I worked on some of these. If you go to Little Italy, you can see in the background, it's right outside of downtown San Diego. We wanted to do a memorial to the soldiers that never came home from World War II and the Korean War. And we created this, we vacated the street working in cooperation with the City of San Diego and designated this as called the Piazza Barcelona. John Barcelona was the most decorated Italian-American in US history, excuse me, in the Marine Corps' history. And this is a center for activity for the Marines when they come to Little Italy and they do a lot of events here. Next. This is just what the piazza looked like after it was completed and it's completely managed. It was built and managed by the association with revenues that we generated ourselves. Next. And we came up with this great little big Christmas tree, actually. It's called, my head's, sorry. It's not working this evening. It's too much going on. But this is our Christmas village that we do in Little Italy and this, excuse me, it's called the Shimmer Tree. And we also have another shimmer demonstration that we'll show you in, in North Beach in San Francisco. But this is the stuff that the district can do. We can, we do great holiday events and people flock to Little Italy on this. Anybody can come in and they can go, they can come and visit for free. There's not, there's no charge, there's no admission. Next. This is, used to be the heart of Little Italy. It was just two streets, Indian Date Street, and it transformed into this. Next slide. Called the Piazza della Famiglia. This happened over four years. We use developer impact fees as well as the developer impact fees from the property owner themselves. And we use some other developer impact fees. This is post redevelopment. There is not $1 of redevelopment put into this. And it changed the entire character of the community by having this gathering spot. It's 10,000 square feet. We do all of our events there and it's one of six piazas that we've created in Little Italy. It's really the grand piazza. Next. When we do, when we have the, we bring the soldiers down and they do Special Olympics. And you can see everybody, people in wheelchairs and other people that might have been disabled over the years. Usually it's 12 to 13 countries come to Camp Pendleton, which is north of San Diego, and they do Special Olympics for a week. We invite them down to Little Italy. This is where they gathered at the piazza. You'll see the guy waving in the middle is our mayor, Todd Loria. And we do this just to give back to the community. This is not about This is not about making money or selling meatball sandwiches or spaghetti. This is about giving back to the community. And that's the value, and that's why they're called community benefit districts instead of just business improvement districts. This is an annual event and it's one thing that we started about fifteen years ago and it grows every year. Next. We did another one to uh on the left side to the piazza, to the fishermen. San Diego was the tuna capital of the world up until about nineteen seventy-two. And we'd got this grant from um from Chicken of the Sea, excuse me, Bumblebee. And we paid for that, a nice fisherman there holding up the, in a statue, holding up the tuna fish. One of our smaller uh piazzas, but it's a beautiful piazza. We designed it, we built it in cooperation with a developer. Next, to the right, you'll see something and it's called Piazza Gianini. Well, who was Amadeo Gianini? He was from North Beach, he lived in the peninsula. He reinvented banking. He started the Bank of Italy and then bought the name Bank of America and then went nationwide with it. So Amadeo Gianini doesn't have a piazza in North Beach, but it has one in Little Italy because of the changes that he made to the US economy. Next. And this was something that we were looking at, this was a development that was made by Lennar, the Lennar, excuse me, Lennar Corporation. Instead of having parking, we said, can you just put a sidewalk out? We have an idea for a brand new piazza and it was named Piazza Castanza. We buy the tables, chairs and umbrellas, we raised a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for this piazza. Mitch Castanza was part of Jimmy Carter's cabinet, she was a San Diegan in the later half of her life. And she was a very, very well-connected, worked for the DA in San Diego. We wanted to do some type of tribute to not only someone in San Diego, but a woman too. So she's the, this is the first of more piazzas that we have in Little Italy. Next. And this was the dedication with Mayor Gloria, uh when we dedicated in December twenty twenty-three. Had a number of people there and it's now part of our inventory of piazzas. You guys have a great microclimate and there, if you walk up and down Broadway or maybe El Camino Real, really walkable, but where do people sit down? Maybe outside of Pete's, they can sit down for a little bit, usually they have coffee or something from Pete's, but there's no place to just sit and watch people. And so that's why I think that public spaces, piazzas, you know, plazas, et cetera, are an integral part of whatever we do in California. And what did we learn during COVID? Be outside, don't be indoors. And so the more outdoor activities we have, the better. Next. And I'm wrapping this up pretty quickly. I wanted to show you some of the things that we did. And we used to run the downtown San Leandro district. You see this public art that was done to the left. And that was just one thing that we wanted to work with a building owner on. You'll see at the bottom, if you've ever seen Truth is Beauty outside of the Bart Station in San Leandro. Uh, Truth is Beauty is, is we made it into a focal point. Uh, it came from Burning Man and the developer of that property bought it and put it there and it becomes a focal point when you're getting off Bart in San Leandro. Next. On Broadway, we did a series of things, Peter MacCorini uh steps. If you've seen it, it's at the end of Kearney, it goes straight up into North Beach and the hills of North Beach. And this was a dedication that we did for those steps. And the next slide shows you the impact of some of these things that we've done also. This is in Glendale. Um, this is, we do toy soldiers there. This is the decorations during the holidays, fiber last spring flowers on the corners, hay bales, uh, excuse me, hay, scarecrows and pumpkins during the fall. And so all these things show people that it's, you have, you have changing of the seasons much more in Northern California than we do in Southern California. So that's why we do these things to show people the changing of the season. Next. So the public meetings were held in October twenty-three in person, November twenty-three via Zoom. We've had, and the informational website and Millbrae News and social media postings have been going on over the past year. We've had over a dozen one-on-one stakeholder meetings with property owners, uh presented to the Economic Development Advisory Committee. I did that back in twenty eighteen also. Uh, property owner notifications, December, to verify that the data that we had for the properties was correct. We're not required to do it, but we just did it because it's part of our process. A petition and summary with Chinese translation was recently mailed to six hundred and eight property owners. We're doing a walking tour tomorrow and the outreach will continue through the petition period, which hopefully concludes by April thirtieth. Next. That's, that, that's it. So I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know that there's been a lot of questions, emails, rumors, et cetera. So I'm here, so I'm happy to answer any question the mayor or city council has regarding this process.
Thank you very much. Um, it, it's a very detailed presentation and report and, and you know, um, I can tell you ran through it many, many times. So that's uh just how detailed it is and how, how um, you know, knowledgeable that you have been uh with establishing so many community benefit district up and down the state of California. Now, um, just for benefited public, I read all the social media postings. Um, and I've been in touch with everybody and speak to almost most of you, uh either in person or on email. Um, and it's, I understand the public has a lot of question and we're here to take all the public input. And so I'd like to get started today with the council questions, you know, on the dais, for all of our questions so that we can help answer uh some of these questions, you know, get the facts out there so everybody's on the same page as, as to what CBD is and what it isn't, what is mean to, what is meant to do and what is not meant to do. Um, you know, I, I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page in terms of facts. And um, and then we can make better decision moving forward. And just so for everybody's benefit as well, tonight is informational. It's, it's an educational session so that everybody can get the facts. Just as the consultant just said, there'll be a walking tour tomorrow and more opportunity to ask questions and get the facts about what this is. We'll start with the council questions and then after that we'll take public comment and then we'll bring it back to the council for um for final discussion. Anyone on the council want to have any questions for our consultant? Councilmember Duane.
Thank you for the presentation, it was quite educational. I can see potential benefits for the CBD, but um I had questions around the administrative costs, efficiency and oversight. So uh, one thing I was mentioning was a twenty percent allocation for administrative costs. What kind of measures uh can you talk about for cost efficiency and transparency? Uh, and just really to be able to see uh, you know, like basically average uh communicate to the city council and other governing bodies of what, you know, what the cost would look like. So I'm just curious what your thoughts on that would be.
Oh, you mean the administrative costs?
Yeah.
The administrative costs, and thank you, we've moved back to that, is about a hundred and forty-eight thousand. Insurance is extremely problematic these days in California and general liability in particular, workers' comp. So we want to make sure that, and workers' comp would be covered by the civil sidewalks, which are basically the people that are working on the ground. But this gives enough of a cushion, a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars to have somebody, maybe they're a full-time executive director with a part-time, they have an office, you know, they might have some legal uh costs, utilities, et cetera. So usually we never make the, and the administration includes the contingency. What is contingency? Contingency is not everybody pays their property taxes. So we have to make sure that we're not looking at a hundred percent budget when there might only be a ninety-six or ninety-seven percent budget. So the administration is actually around seventeen percent. So based upon that, this is just, I always try to look at it's eighty percent in direct services and twenty percent for contingency and admin. The bigger the budget, you can lower the admin, but there's a certain base in which you need just to keep the operation running. And so this has been my experience, uh when all is said and done, of the one forty-eight, there might be um overhead costs, not personnel, but overhead costs of forty thousand dollars or so. So it leaves you about a hundred and ten or so to hire one or two or three staff.
So in a scenario where, uh, let's say, a good scenario, right, where this does work and we get improvement economically, wouldn't it make sense to have some kind of cap? Because twenty percent on a larger scale could mean quite a significant amount of dollars going towards administrative purposes, right?
You're right. So let's say the district somehow went to two million dollars, twenty percent is four hundred thousand dollars, a lot of money for admin. So um, uh, I would tell you that the board will always have the ability to say, we don't want to overpay. This isn't about a jobs program, at least for the admin. It could be a jobs program for the people that are doing the sidewalk sweeping, particularly if they're Millbrae citizens or citizens that live within about five miles or so. But that would be the highest labor allocation would be in civil sidewalks. District identity is usually more contracted uh through social media and PR. And the admin is, someone needs to come to the city council, explain things to the city council, or go and talk to different groups of property owners or community leaders and community organizations. That could be easily a full-time job. So I want to make sure that there's an accommodation for that within this budget. So I came up with a seventeen percent, as long as eighty percent are in direct services to the property owners.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Rinaldi.
Thank you for the detailed presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you to the city staff for a very detailed agenda packet, forty-four pages was really thorough. My question's around the management structure. Um, I see here the term nonprofit thrown out as well as owners association. And speaking with many of the residents uh of Millbrae who are a little bit skeptical of having a third party that may not have roots within our community come in and manage a community benefits district. My thought is more so around, based off your experience, what's the, the breakdown of nonprofit versus owners associations as far as management of these CBDs?
Owners association is a term that's used in the nineteen ninety-four law, the Property Business Improvement District, because they didn't want cities to run these entities that are being paid for by private property owners, even though public would also be paying into it. So owners association is in the streets and highway code. All of these districts are run by nonprofit corporations, all of them. And most of them are five-one C-threes because they're providing public benefit. When you saw that we did the big piazza in the middle of Little Italy, that wasn't so we could sell more food or drink. That was for a gatherings place, that is a public benefit. So they're set up as five-one C-threes. Regarding uh the management, if someone in Millbrae could manage it effectively, they should do it. So remember, New City America's formed ninety-eight districts, soon to be a hundred, we only manage eight. So we don't manage every district that we create. We're primarily, and we have different divisions within New City America. We form districts, we manage districts, and we consult with districts. So my contract is to try to get this through the finish line. The finish line would be this July, making sure that the assessment ballot proceeding is positive so this district can go forward, ideally starting in the beginning of twenty twenty-six. So there's no, there's no quid pro quo here. Doesn't mean that if I formed the district, New City America's going to be running it. So if people are saying that, I don't know where they're getting that from.
I appreciate your comments around that, but we do have quite a few business owners within our community that have experienced New City over in Oakland. And that's where a lot of the fear comes from.
Chinatown. I know it well.
Yes.
Trust me, but I've formed eleven districts in Oakland. And we could, we could have an off, um, we can, I could explain to you exactly what happened there because the uh, it was an interesting development, very supportive during the formation, fell apart when it came to management. And that competing forces that were both trying to manage it. And alls I was trying to do was arbitrate to make sure that the best manager was hired. I only served an interim purpose at that point, I didn't run the district.
Yeah, I think there needs to be a thorough review of that to figure out how we avoid those pitfalls.
Totally agree.
Forward.
Yeah, because that had never happened before. I mean, I've done this a lot of times. There was, and let's keep in mind too that that part of Oakland was completely thrashed during COVID. And the George Floyd demonstrations that occurred went straight through Chinatown. The level of vacancies was unbelievable. I didn't initiate that, I was called by the Chamber of Commerce to come in and create that, which is what I did. And I wound up doing it actually during COVID in three languages, English, Chinese and Vietnamese. So it was quite a challenge. Our first board of directors had forty-seven people on it. To try to get everybody to agree on something was always challenging. So there's a whole story there. The first executive director wound up leaving, I had nothing to do with that. He hired somebody whose parents actually owned property and a jewelry store in Chinatown. He's doing a pretty good job and has brought the community back together. I'd be happy to talk to anybody about Chinatown and Oakland.
Yeah, I would definitely like to have an offline meeting.
Okay.
City manager, if we could arrange for that, that'd be fantastic.
Yeah, if I may, Mayor.
So.
I think this is the appropriate place and time to clear the air though on that. And I would rather have that discussion here in public with the expert that any question that anybody has, I think now is the appropriate time.
So.
I really do.
Yeah, let's do this. So first of all, I, I just want to be clear. This is about Millbrae discussing formation of a community benefit district. This is not a discussion or a place of arbitrations or judgment about what happened in Chinatown and Oakland. So, but yes, you know, it's important for us to understand some of the best practices and some of the past experience that helped guide the future as to what needs to happen in order for this Millbrae CBD.
Right.
To become successful. I, I think that's the light at which we need to look at all of those discussions. Um, now, if you don't mind, I just want to bring about one point very clearly, and you said that twice. And as people said, something important, you gotta say it three times. You form ninety-eight districts.
Correct.
Looking to become a hundred.
Yes.
And you manage only eight of them?
Correct.
That's eight percent out of the hundred that you're establishing.
That's correct.
Your goal is not to manage the CBD after the establishment, correct?
Correct.
And let, let me just be real clear, so that everybody, everybody understands what this is about and what it isn't. Because that's important. The nonprofit organization that is going to be established to manage the CBD comprised of board of directors within the district.
Correct.
And the, the property, hold on, I'm like, the, I'm just trying to make sure we get the facts out there. And the property owner are going to vote to whether or not to establish the CBD. This council does not decide unilaterally whether or not to establish the CBD, correct?
That is correct.
And the property owner will vote on a weighted method based on, you know, um, the dollar value at which they will contribute into the CBD.
That is correct.
They will decide who the board of directors are, correct?
Yes.
And the board of directors will manage that nonprofit organization moving forward.
Correct.
And that, that nonprofit organization, that, that, those board of directors will decide who is going to manage this CBD as the administrator.
That is correct.
And what to pay them.
That is correct.
If they pay them.
They probably will have to, but yes, that is correct too.
Someone might come up and say, I'm going to do it for free, I don't know, right? But, but hold, hold on, let's just make sure we get the facts. Because it, there's a budget here being proposed as a first year budget, it's actually right behind uh.
Yes.
That's, is that the one? Yeah, that's the one.
Yes.
Right behind you there. Um, so that twenty percent is what you believe is a viable proposal, at least for the first year. And then after the board of directors have been decided and voted in, they can change the budget as they please, correct?
No, that, that's.
Let's, let's clear that.
So the, when property owners vote on this menu for all intents and purposes, they're voting that sixty percent of any assessment district revenues will go for what we call civil sidewalks. Twenty percent, they must stay on that.
Okay, so there's a spending plan.
Because that's what they voted for.
Right, okay.
Now, if you get, if I can, Mr. Mayor, if we are really entrepreneurial in Little Italy, we have a budget that's twice as, one point five million in assessments, three point nine million in the budget last year. We're really entrepreneurial, a really successful farmer's market.
Okay.
If they decide that this is what they can spend the assessment dollars on, if they do great events and they generate revenue from that, then that is non-assessment district revenue to a five-one C-three. They can say, we want to do this special project. We want to give to the Leo people, even though they're not necessarily in it, because that's non-assessment district money. So the whole point of this isn't just to live on the assessments, is to leverage that and try to bring in more revenue.
So this is the budget or spending plan for the assessed money?
Correct.
Whereas if the district in the future generate its own revenue, the board of director has discretion how to use those funds.
That is correct.
Okay, and obviously, and then can these numbers be tweaked? I mean, sixty, twenty, twenty, can these um be sort of mushed around a bit?
The plan will say that they can move up to ten percent in one category within the first five years.
Okay.
Then it's locked. This is sort of like the constitution of that assessment district.
Okay.
And these allocations are based upon, just my experience, the eighty-twenty idea.
Okay, but, but the changes of that, if any, in the future is to be decided by the board of directors.
Board of directors, if they wanted to alter this, then they would have to go to the city council and ask for an amendment to the plan. But that would be up to the board of directors, the city council could say, no, we like it just the way it is.
And do they need to take it back to the voters or take it back to the um, the district property owner for a vote?
That could be done, that could be done also, you could do a poll and ask everybody, we want to put more money into district identity. We don't need as much in civil sidewalks or we're doing really well, we don't need twenty percent in the admin. So we want to redo it and they can do that by a poll of the different property owners and then bring that, the, the results of that to the city council.
Let me just be real clear. So the board of director of this organization is going to run this organization.
Yes.
And the board of directors will be the property owners of Millbrae.
Correct.
Not some outsiders, not somebody from somewhere else, Nebraska, San Diego, wherever that might be. That someone might claim it to be. But it's Millbrae property owners managing this Millbrae community benefit. But it's Millbrae property owners managing this Millbrae community benefit district.
That's correct.
That needs to be very, very clear. And, and the board of director chooses who is going to be the ED to execute the board's direction.
Right. And in my experience, no staff members or executive directors are ever voting members of the board.
Correct.
It would be a conflict of interest.
Perfect, alright. So just want to make sure these facts are out there. I thought, I hope that helps guide the discussion.
It does, yes.
And the work plan, because I think you have also a work plan as to, you know, sidewalk safety, cleanliness, you know, place making and, and, you know, there's some ambassadors being discussed, some outreach from perhaps somebody on house or being talked about. The work plan is also being decided by the board of directors, correct?
Correct. It's, Councilman Rinaldi asked, thank you for sending us a 44-page document. All that stuff is in that 44-page document.
I know. But you know, you know how easy it is to read 44 pages of document for the public? So that's why this meeting is valuable and that the public gets to understand that.
A quick comment on that point about the 44 pages. And a recommendation was made to staff earlier today by myself regarding a fact sheet with this CBD, because there's a ton of misinformation running around about it. And to your point, Mayor Feng, I think it's important that members of this community understand that if a CBD is established, it'll be done by the property owners because they're going to be voting on it. The only interaction city council have is to pass a resolution of intention or the language of the measure that'll go on the ballot. And then the actual property owners have to pass it on a ballot. So I want to be crystal clear that tonight, we're not voting to put a CBD into motion. That this is strictly just to get information. So being that we have that said, as far as the CBD goes, you know, a fact sheet would really help alleviate some of those misinformations of thinking that a third party's going to come into the town that doesn't have roots and tell us what we have to do. So my recommendation would be the fact sheet.
Okay. Let me just kind of run through the rest of it here.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. So on our website, we have a link and we'll put that on our, on our homepage.
Right.
It's been up for several months and it has all the fact and information.
And it's translated.
Correct.
Yeah. It could be in multiple languages.
And Spanish. And so we'll make that front and center so people just have to go to our homepage and they can link on it.
Yeah, just, I just want to drive one more point home here. You know, we want to have a successful CBD. If we establish one, we need to be successful. But in case, we've seen some challenges in the past and as we discussed just a moment ago, right? Who gets to have the final say and the decision to disband or dissolve the CBD?
That is also in the plan. A disestablishment can be done of a property assessment district by the same people that created it.
Correct.
They would do a petition of 30% to trigger a disestablishment. They would then bring it to the city council and the city council can actively disestablish the property assessment district if it's not doing what it was intended to do.
Right. So which means if the property owner feel that the CBD is not working out, they can choose to dissolve it and, and all the assessment will be done. There will be no more future assessment.
That's correct.
So I just want to make sure everybody understands that this isn't something that being placed upon you by outside influences and, and that is a perpetual thing that, you know, despite some might think that if it's not successful, we're going to keep paying into this. You know, it's, the property owner ultimately has the decision as to how this CBD needs to run, if it continues, and how successful it needs to be in the direction that it needs to go. The ED, the executive director that the board of director hires will execute the board's direction and the policies and the work plan that has been specified. So I just want to make sure that this is clear to the public and, and everybody who has interest in this, okay? Anyone else from this council with questions? Vice Mayor.
Thank you. You answered a lot of the questions that I had. So just to clarify, you mentioned the budget is somewhat, you said it can deviate by up to 10%?
Yeah.
From one category to the next?
Correct.
So if they were more interested in doing more identity and place making as opposed to sidewalks?
Just cleaning, right.
Okay. But, but only a 10% change?
Yeah, and they would have to have to bring that to the city council and have the city council endorse that and have an explanation as to why that was being done.
But it wouldn't require a vote of the full?
If you were to do it fundamentally, yes, you'd have to do another vote of the property owners because you're changing the plan.
Okay.
If it's, that's why we allow for a 10%. And I would also say too, that it's, your civil sidewalks will probably always be 60% only because it's very difficult to get grants or underwriters for cleaning. It's much easier to get grants or underwriter for special events or things like that because people want their name on different things.
Okay. What about, you know, like public art or?
That would be in district identity.
Okay. More physical type contributions to the district?
Correct.
Okay. And then in terms of the map, the district map, is that, you mentioned, you know, the petitions have already gone out. So is that kind of set in stone at this point or?
Nope. It's not set in stone until the actual, as the councilman mentioned, that you'll adopt what's called a resolution of intent, which then authorizes the ballots to go out. But city councils can amend, they can always lower the, excuse me, lower the assessments or shrink the district at the resolution of formation. So that's possible. That's up to the city council to do. It has happened before in different districts that have done.
Okay. So I just had a couple of comments on that. One comment that I heard from the public was, and I think has some merit, is that perhaps like owner-occupied condominiums maybe should be exempted from this?
It's not too late to do that.
Okay.
I would tell you that the condos out of a $742,000 budget, the condos contribute $43,000.
Okay. So it wouldn't be a significant revenue loss?
No, it's about 5% or 6%.
And I think those folks are probably not likely to vote yes for it? Or they, I don't think they would see the same benefit as commercial property owners with, you know, a frontage?
Councilman, I would tell you that in Little Italy district, over half the assessments are paid by condo.
Okay.
They really enjoy it because of the public spaces and all the other things that we do to make their environment much more exciting. So, but it's, it, you know, really depends. I did Yerba Buena about 15 years ago, tons of condominiums in Yerba Buena district in San Francisco. And it passed overwhelmingly.
Okay. But I think that's something maybe to consider if we make it down to that, to that point. And then one other thing I noticed in the map, there's a block on Hemlock Avenue, the last block there, which I believe is in the district because I think it is zoned, technically zoned commercial, but is all single-family residential houses. So I would recommend taking that out of the district. And it's also, it's a cul-de-sac. It's not really connected to the greater downtown per se.
We can do those adjustments before we bring it to the city council for the resolution of intent.
Okay.
I have a question. Are you done?
I think I'm done for now, thank you.
Okay. So if any changes were made on the map and also the assessments of the residential condominiums, does the new petition need to go out?
No. Because the dollar amount will stay the same. So when someone actually, let's say I sign for $2,000. If the district actually goes down, my weight goes up, but the amount stays the same because I haven't changed the assessment method. That person still has the same linear frontage, lot size, and building square footage. So the petition talks about their dollar amount and it has a percentage. But what really matters in the end, let's say that the district got lowered by $42,000. The, you know, $5,000 would be a little bit more weight on a $700,000 budget than a $742,000. But the petitions are still valid because they have a dollar amount. When someone signed, they signed on that dollar amount.
Okay. So I, I think it might be valuable for us to have a discussion on the maps and some of those assessments. I think there's room for improvement here. For example, I see the zone two, the orange section, for example, like somebody Alcamino Frontage property, like, you know, Friendship Plaza, for example, are in the zone two. Perhaps some of these could be a little bit more creative about it. You know, I like to see some, perhaps some discussions on those and see how we could, you know, be a little bit more sensitive to where the locations are and how it could benefit from the CBD. And also, just as the vice mayor suggested, and I also have spoken to the city manager, some of the condo owners, residential property owners, how we can, you know, be a little bit more sensitive to the cost of living, right? And how we can make sure that, you know, they only pay, if any, what is needed. Can you bring back the slides that you described what the residential condo contributes to the overall $700,000 and change? I think there were like $44,500 or something like that.
Yeah, it's 43 around there.
Okay. 6% of residential condominium?
Yes.
So 740?
Forty, it's 742 right now. If you took out the 43, it'd be 699.
So roughly, I mean, I did the quick math. It's roughly about $44,000.
Yes.
Thereabout. And if we were to say, you know, either cut them in half, right? So that the residential property owners pay half of what is being assessed here, whereas and some of the, based on the changes on some of the maps, bring some of the Alcamino Real property, commercial, retail properties, break in zone one to try to make up the difference so that at least we can try to alleviate some of the burdens that our residents are seeing.
Yeah. The time to do that is now.
Okay.
Because if we're going, we have to have a final plan that we present to the city council.
Okay.
But it has to have all those adjustments in it. And then it'll have maybe a new budget. The percentages will stay the same in terms of civil sidewalks and everything. But we're going to have to have a finished product to you. So when the ballots go out, the ballots are very clear on the map who's included and who's not.
Okay. Alright. So if this is the time and place for this discussion, does the council want to take this discussion? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I had a follow-up question on that. So let's say if this were to be approved and at some point down the road, there were to be a large development just outside of the district boundaries, would it be possible to incorporate them within the district at that time?
Yeah.
Or what's?
It would be. Because let's say that right now, the old Lucky Shopping Center is kind of empty.
Right.
The Walgreens and Lucky Clothes.
I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that they're going to come back, but.
Yeah, so am I. It's a great piece of property, so.
Can you imagine?
But that is within the district though.
But they are in the district.
But it's in zone two.
Okay.
Yeah, but, but let's say that there is something that we figure out that maybe, are we on the northern border right now? Are we at the, I think we stopped. So we wouldn't go to the, we wouldn't go to the west and we couldn't really go to the east. So we're, we're kind of locked in on where our Berlin game is to the south. So there's not a lot of room. You can only really shrink it rather than expand it. But other than that, Councilman Holobar is, we would, they, they came in, they're already in the district.
Okay. So, but hypothetically, let's say 10 years from now, there's five new council members and they vote to rezone a single-family residential area as a high-density area.
Good luck on that one, so.
Not us five, so five others. At that time, and there's a development in that particular lot or group of lots, could that, could the district be expanded to incorporate that type of?
Yeah, and what you would do, you don't want to mess with the current boundary. So that would become, become Millbrae CBD 2, but it's managed by the same corporation. The assessments are the same, the services are the same, but basically that one, kind of like a Melrose, that one property owner would be the one that would vote. I mean, like one petition, if it was that type of development that you're alluding to.
Alright, thank you.
Here.
Any other council members? Councilmember Riley?
Hi. You mentioned the vote by the dollar amount, right?
I'm sorry?
You mentioned vote by the dollar amount.
By the dollar amount. Waited by the dollar amount.
Okay. Now you also mentioned the residential only have 5% to 6%, right?
The residential condos, not the residential apartments.
Yes. Then how many percent for the, for the, for the individual property owners for the percentage? Because I saw their airport pay big amount and the city and the water company. So how many individual commercial property owner, the percentage? How many percent?
Well, I'll tell you, I went through the list, the list of assessed property owners is 45 pages. Of that 45 pages, 22 are condos. So that gives you an idea that in terms of the parcels, it would probably go from 668 parcels down to probably about 300. So in terms of parcels, it would be maybe about the same size, but certain areas that were predominantly residential condos would be cut out. Does that answer your question?
Not really, because I already know we can examine for condo owner. How about the individual business, business property owner?
I don't know how many businesses own their property, but it would be their landlords that would be doing the voting on it. So each, each property, each parcel has the right to vote. Their votes are based upon the dollar amount that they're putting into the district.
Yes, I know that they're voted not by the head, by the owner, voted by the dollar. So if the corporate or a big company voted yes, and it doesn't matter the residential or small company vote.
Yes. So that's what the state constitution says. I didn't make this rule up. So it's under Article 13D, it's Prop 218. It says that the district can only be approved by a weighted vote.
Okay.
And the weighted is in the constitution.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions from the council? Go ahead, Councilmember, when?
Yeah, so going back on the administrative side, right? Like, I'd like to see a more detailed breakdown of the scope of the administrative costs. So you have this blanket 20%, that's fine.
If it's articulated in the plan, what the admin would be.
Okay, yeah, I, maybe I skipped that section. I was trying to go through that detail, but it'd be great to, even on your slides or like a fact sheet that, that he mentioned, would be great to see what that breakdown looks like. And then also the, the oversight and accountability for that administrative piece would be useful as well as metrics for efficiency and cost efficiency on that area or actually entire, in entirety, but specifically in the administrative piece of it.
Okay. And I can work with Andy on that and we can present something. I, I'm not trying to shackle anybody, say you have to do this. It says you can do all these different things. It's basically the way the corporation is operated. And the city has ultimate oversight. So for this, if the city council, and this has happened in San Diego, a city was not comfortable with the management corporation. They changed the management corporation. They gave the contract to somebody else. So that means that the city council has the ultimate authority to ensure, because you have the fiduciary responsibility to ensure that the district is doing, it's providing special benefits to people and it's not just a job placement for everybody. You have the ability to ask at any time and every year, the district executive director would have to come and give a report to you and explain, this is what we did this year, this is what we're proposing for next year. And in all probability, since the city's a property owner, the city would have a seat on the board, a voting seat on the board, if not two.
Thank you.
Sure.
One thing I'd like to call out for the public's benefit, City Manager Williams, City Manager Williams, can you refresh me on how much SFPUC pays us for taxes per year? And also BART and SFO?
Edward, if you can go to the allocation.
The taxes you're talking about, the existing property tax.
So they said right.
I can answer that question, it's zero right now.
Exactly.
So, so, okay. So there, so there would be some financial benefit then to these parcels?
Oh, yes. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure we call that out for the public.
Yeah. Yeah. Now, um, and through this establishment of this CBD, the public entity, SFO, San Francisco PUC, BART, and, and some of the other transit agencies, they will have to pay their fair share into this CBD.
Yes, BART, BART always does. They're on two different boards that, you know, we've worked in it on the past. Cities want to be involved in it because usually cities are paying a good amount of money, so, um, yes. They would be, and I want to make sure everybody understands too, these corporations, the nonprofit management, they're subject to the Brown Act and the California Public Records Act. So if someone wants information, they can say, I need this information. You haven't posted it on your website. All their meetings have to be posted seventy-two hours in advance to show what the action items are. They have to be posted on the outside of the building, just like yours are. So there are provisions in the law that says that they have to be subject to the Brown Act and the California Public Records Act.
Alright, okay, so, um, we have a lot of public waiting to speak here, and we'll come back for more discussion, council, if that's okay with all of you. Um, we're gonna do a little bit differently today. We'll take the online speaker first. I know some of them might be actually overseas. And then we'll take the in-chamber speaker after. City clerk, can you please call the online speaker?
The first speaker is iPhone. Please go ahead and accept the mute and state your name for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. This is Alice Kong. Um, I keep thoughts, number one. As the CEO of New City America can say, they only management eight percent of the all-year long set up the TBC for the nineteen A one. That mean, why would he say what we did, what we did, doesn't mean what he did, okay? He didn't did it. It's only those eight percent he did it. So he's totally misleading the pictures. He did the management that. The second, by the contract with the city, of course, he's not going to management it. So whatever he say, after he sits up, he's gone. And we believe we're facing a complete new organization to management that. Another hand, it's as a dollar amount weighing for the vote. So even though the more than five hundred condominium owner, they vote low, it's only six percent. They cannot have a voice. We will pay the big dollar amount. And then they will voice for all their, whatever they, they do, the box that do. How many people are lotus for that? Even though I have been talked to in the district who going to pay the, this, uh, additional tax. Uh, the business owner, successful business owner, accounting, healthcare professional, teacher. Uh, some other, uh, financial, uh, um, specialized. None of them understand what they mean because they say that partition. Partition mean, our citizen, the owner asks the city to, uh, pay, ask them to pay additional tax. It's still big. So it's not a, a, a community benefit district, it's low. The name is wrong. They're misleading people. That's a special assessment district. It's a special taxpayer district, should be that way. So the whole processing is meeting the whole community. Mayor, you're very smart. You're smart, it's giving the, the person to, to marker. And misleading him to giving the wrong answer to missing the council member and also our communities. It's not the right questions. Number one, because this is us the different, you know, in the zone to pay additional tax. And the tax can increase based on what the box say, but who can have a big mouth to control the box? It's who paying a big dollar amount. Even the more than five hundred condominium owner or any other single house owner or small parcel of a pass, uh, uh, property owner. They cannot have a voice in the future. They cannot. But they will pay. Is that fair enough? No.
Thank you. Thank you for the comment. Thank, thank you for the comment. Next.
Next speaker is Al, uh, Albert Yam. Please accept the mute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Uh, thank you. I am in favor of a CBD as it can provide important resources for the development of Millbury. However, so far, I'm not convinced with New City America. First of all, many of our local leaders have had bad experience with them in another project that they manage. We are a city of unity, so that gets spread pretty quickly. And I doubt misunderstanding could be an acceptable answer because it only shows how lacking in the communication. Secondly, uh, I'm a little bit disappointed with the presentation. I haven't heard anything about a concrete ROI. For an important presentation like this in front of our people, he missed the opportunity to address that. And this is probably a pitch he has done hundreds of times before, which only means it's something either, um, deliberately fake about, or there's a lack of measurable outcome that the businesses and property owners truly care about. Thirdly, we're, you know, we're a different breed of audience this, this time here. I can say certain for one thing, at Millbury, the residents here can smell horseshoe from a mile out. And this presentation kinda enforces my impression. It reminds me of what I heard on August twentieth, twenty twenty-three. I appreciate, uh, councilmember Rinaldi's comment about the public agencies, you know, um, tax pay, tax payment under this CBD. Um, we have heard many times in this city council that, you know, SFPUC, BART, or other, you know, agencies don't pay their fair share. And I think, you know, this is, this kinda addresses that. I also appreciate, uh, uh, councilmember Oliver's suggestion of looking into, you know, helping the condo owners. Uh, I think that could make a big difference. Lastly, on the CBD again, I support the initiative, but the outreach could have been done better, as there's so many uncertainties and questions out there. I hope this will be a good, you know, um, experience for everyone concerned. Additionally, to emphasize a point I thought I've heard, the property owners who, uh, public agencies have a conflict of interest. Since the expense can be considered something within the normal function of the city, like street cleaning. Therefore, they should not have any influence on the board directors if we go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, there is a hand online that keep on going off and on. Oh, there it is. Um, Margaret Ning, please accept the mute.
Dear councilmembers, I, I'm a Millbury resident. Echoing the last speaker's comment, I'm also in favor of CBD, but yet have to do a better job in terms of designing which management company is gonna be coming in to manage the entire CBD effort. Um, based on what, uh, what we have been hearing from the previous experience in other cities. It sounded like it's, it gone downhill dramatically that we really need to focus on um, selecting the white management company and not to conclusion on whether New City America will be managing the creation of the, uh, nonprofit organization. Um, that's number one. Number two, some of the property owners within the commercial district, they're small property owners. Um, they, they are retirees, perhaps having them assess, uh, even as small as a hundred dollars of tax per year may not be ideal. So if the council would make a notion of that to ensure we are making the assessment with the right justification, that would be greatly appreciated. Thirty, I'm actually very, um, excited that we are finally making BART and San Francisco PUC to make, pay their fair share. So again, I'm in support of CBD, but we need to take this process cautiously to ensure it will not impact our current residents. Thank you.
Mayor, that's all the public speaker we have online.
Thank you, and then we'll begin with in-chamber speaker. The first one is John Chang.
Dear councilmember, good evening. And, um, regarding this, the CBD, uh, I'm in a, in kind of a neutral. It, it sounds that, uh, uh, that it's a good plan. But my concern is that, uh, I, I, I just scanned through the forty-four pages and one item is talking about a security. And since, um, uh, one, three, nine, six, the condo is next to the La Quinta. So I'm concerned in that, that, you know, the, the, if the, this, this plan can prohibit the county to take over, uh, that, that La Quinta. And, um, it can prohibit, prohibit the, the, the county take over the, the Quinta, then I'm, uh, in favor of it. Otherwise, it's just like Ukraine and Russia, okay? And then, uh, and we don't have a security protection and I'm getting so far.
Thank you, John. Stella Lau.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Millbury is a small community and every tax increase affects all of us. Local businesses are already struggling with high cost. Any new tax will be passed on to consumers, making life even more expensive for residents. It will also make it harder for businesses to stay open. Once this tax is added, will continue to increase every year, adding to the financial strength on both business and residents. Please do not follow the path of San Francisco and Oakland. Where similar initiative with a similar community benefit have not lead to meaningful improvement. Instead, businesses are failing and many continues to struggle just to survive. And please, we ask the city council not to move forward with anything with tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you. And Li Shi Huang.
Good evening, uh.
Get closer to the mic?
Huang.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Huang and, uh, councilmember. Um, I tell you that I'm one of the condominium owners, so I'm not happy about who get this information and receive the package. Um, I feel like our property is only used for residential purpose, not commercial purpose. And we do not have any business income. Why are we subject to business tax? Understand. Secondly, um, that's the means that the CBD only benefit us. Not all the residential, not all the city, not the whole city. I'm sure that the build, the purpose of building a CBD is to revitalize the city economy and, and benefit all the residents. Why will owning the condominium owners living in the commercial district have to pay the additional tax? Is this differential treatment fair to us? And I'm also questioning about the legal process. Um, the public heating, healing should go first, then the voting. But last month, I got a vote, where we have to vote yes or no. I'm really confused. I don't have the whole picture about, about this CBD. And I also questioning why the, they call the New City American can send out those petition to us? They have the power? I don't understand. And I'm really confused about those Chinese translation, major in Chinese language or in China. But most of the language, the Chinese in word, the Chinese in translation, I don't understand. I read those package several times, I still don't understand. There's a lot of word really confused. I feel like, um, there are a lot of misleading and deliberated cons- consummation of the truth. It's very constructive. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Ray Louis. Ray, get closer to the mic. Thank you.
Good evening, city council. City council members from District One, Stefan Rinaldi, District Two, Sissy Riley, District Three, Ruben Holber, District Four, Bob Nguyen, and District Five, Mayor Anders Spung. To all the city staff on site tonight and our fellow citizens of Millbury. My name is Ray Louis. My wife and I are thirty-year homeowners in this great city. I'm not a public speaker. I took some time and wrote down my thoughts. I will not be looking up to make eye contact. Instead, I will be reading to you my thoughts, word for word. Please forgive me for not making eye contact. I was informed by a neighbor this past Sunday about a tax on business property owners. I think the New City America consultant that Millbury is using is not good for our city. New City America is going to make lots of money from their ill-advised ideas for our wonderful city. In my humble opinion, New City America is not America, USA. This tax, in my opinion, weakens business property owners and weakens property owners, not strengthen business property owners. The city of Millbury, in my opinion, does not need any type of consultants for Millbury's services. The city needs to have their business done in-house. The city officials and their staff are doing an excellent job in our city, just to name two, among other departments. The parks and public works departments are doing an amazing job. Sam Autista in particular, great guy. In my humble opinion, our city needs to strength, to stretch itself to continue to maintain the quality of our business districts and all five residential districts in our great city. One example of city stretch itself is in code enforcement. Lamont Mack, a great guy in our code enforcement department, enforce our existing policies and codes that govern our business downtown by our own code enforcement department. Thank you for the honor and privilege for speaking in this forum. Good night.
Thank you, Ray. Sari Aoyang.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. My name is Sunny, and I am a Millbury resident. I also serve on the Millbury Economic Development Advisory Committee. But tonight, I am speaking solely as a resident business owner and property owner in O, Dantang, Oakland. I want to share my personal experience when that turned into a nightmare which with New City America, the firm that helped establish the Community Benefit District in Oakland, since they are now working with Millbury. I feel it is important to raise my concern. But in two thousand twenty-one, as a property owner, I attended eight to ten Zoom meeting with New City to learn about how the CBD will work. The pitch sounded promising. They highlight success story, including their work in Dantang, Los Angeles, homeless and street cleaning. Based on their claims and reputation, property owner, including myself, trusted their expertise and moved forward. The CBD was voted in and passed. Then the problem began. The promise they made were, were not fulfilled. When we questioned them, they say they, there wasn't enough budget. Their excuse continues, and the way they managed fund was unclear and lack of accountability. The board oversee, the CBD was structured in the way that left property owner who were funded it without real oversight. As a property and business owner in Dantang, Oakland, I quickly saw the flaws in this setup. Property owner were expected to pay for service, but had no role in day-to-day management or tracking performance. As a result, fund were mismanaged and not used as intended. I tried to encourage other business owner to get involved, but since they weren't the one paying directly into the CBD, they had little incentive to attend meetings or voice concern. Over time, nothing improved it yet. I am now paying nearly nine thousand per year and forty thousand square feet building with little show for it. I also spoke with business owner in San Francisco Commissary Sunset District and other CBD area. They all share similar frustration, saying the system simply wasn't working for them. However, I've tried, learned that in other successful city, CBD do work because they are structured, structured it differently, and importantly, they did not use New City to set them up. Some city has taken a different approach by requiring business owner, not just property owner, to pay for a fee. This ensure that those who directly experienced the impact of CBD operation has a stake in the success and a stronger voice in decision-making. City council meeting, I urge you to make right decision.
Mr. Sunny?
Okay.
Mr. Aoyang, thank you very much for your comment. Thank you. Mary Ann Call.
Here I am again. Okay, actually, it's the CBD and BID, whatever you guys call it, is a good intention for Millbury. I think everybody agree with that, but it's just like, what's gonna be in there, how we gonna implement is the challenge. Um, first of all, I had to comment on the translation. If New City America had worked with the city of Millbury, why city of Millbury has not even? If New City America had worked with the city of Millbrae, why city of Millbrae has not even re-verify their translation? It is disaster. It is really, really disaster translation. Number one, I do not believe our business owner had request a petition. You don't, you don't even use that in English version, but you translate it into Chinese petition. What petition? Today is information session. Had the business owner requested it? No. It is the, it is a direction setting. We're trying to make good to our business district. Okay? So it is information, so it's not petition. There's no petition involved here. Number one, number, another one. I want to comment, Councilmember Rinaldi talked about. Hey, the first time bars is paying San Francisco water trouble. You know what? You cannot use them because they're paying the first time to, to adopt, to even move forward with this. You have to look at the content of it. And then security. What happened to our sheriff? We paid them what? Nine point five million dollars? They cannot provide security? We had to have another CBD security? That's another question. Open spaces, all your photos showing online is not applied to Millbrae. We don't even have additional spaces downtown already. And then, you know, and then so, and so basically is you need to, I agree the approach. But we had to find somebody who know our city, what's their needs out there. And then I do not believe we need sixty percent of the budget to do street cleaning, security. Then that's fire the sheriff, that's hire, hire the CBD policeman. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the comment. I believe this wraps up public comment on this item. Bring it back to the council. You know, we've heard from everybody. I think there's clearly a need for us to discuss, perhaps there's a relief for some of the condo owners who lives in this CBD district. You know, I think I would be happy to entertain some proposal as to, you know, perhaps removing them from that assessment or at least reducing their burden on this assessment. You know, especially given the fact that the contribution from these condo owners are only six percent of the budget, you know, amongst to like about forty-four thousand dollars. I, I believe we can make up the difference by making adjustments on, you know, some of the existing structures of this plan currently. And I also think that we should be able to make some adjustment on the zoning maps too. And I believe some of the Al Camino Real property on the south side or even on the north side, some of that should be part of the zone one because they stand to benefit from the CBD intensely. And also including some of the hotels on Millbrae Avenue as well. So, you know, this is meant to help, you know, our economic development. So we need to look at it through the lenses of economic development and who gets the benefit from it at the end. So I, I think some of those adjustment could help, you know, alleviate some of the concern that we've been hearing and also make sure that the CBD continue to be successful as it was intended. So. Anyone else have comment?
Yeah, I'd like to second your idea, Mayor Feng regarding the condos. My personal take and opinion is to take them out of the plan. I do feel personally that these condo owners paying into the CBD, I look at this as mainly for business economic development. And someone who's residential living in a condominium, the amounts, what, forty thousand dollars? I think take them out, my personal opinion. I have very strong concerns around the management structure coming from the private sector. We've got a term or a saying that we say, that you don't walk down the aisle with someone unless you know everything about them. So to me, not knowing the management structure and who's going to be sitting on that board is a little problematic. And I understand this process doesn't give us the benefit of knowing who's going to be on that board before it's adopted. Once again, for the public, this is the property owners that are making the decision, not the council whether to put the CBD in. Last but not least, two, actually two points. I wanted to comment on the letter that went out. I had heard there was translation errors, but from my understanding, it was the past city council that authorized our city staff to send out the petition. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager Williams?
Yes, this has been an ongoing process, as been said. Previous city councils had authorized formation of the district. We are implementing that.
Perfect, thank you. And then last question I have for you, City Manager Williams. How many peninsula cities have a CBD?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that question. I'm sitting here thirty years I've owned a home here. Thirty years I've seen the downtown decline. All we're doing is trying to make it better. And I know there's a lot of politics and of the entire district, we had nine people speak tonight. I think of which one actually owns property in the district and that's condominium owner. Nobody else that spoke has a vote. Nobody else that spoke has a vested interest in the downtown. We had heard from one of the people that they want more lighting at Victoria. This, this is the second time. You've heard me say we have ten dollars in need and one dollar of revenue. All we're doing is providing an opportunity for the property owners to step up, augment some funding to make this city better than it is today. And if people are worried about their property values, about their lease values, then they should be worried about not forming the district. Because as the downtown continues to decline, that's where you're gonna lose money. It's not a hundred dollars a year. We, we've seen it. Look at the blighted communities. To answer your question, Broadway and Burlingame, Burlingame Avenue, downtown San Mateo, downtown Redwood City, Laurel Street on San Carlos, just in this area, they have these business improvement districts and associations. And a lot of times I hear that, that one of the number one complaints that I receive is the look of downtown. You heard it tonight. Hey, just go out there and do it. Well, you also heard that cities are million dollars in deficit, billions of dollars in the deficit. We don't have the money. And every time that we go out to do something, people complain about spending a few more dollars to make the city great. So you compare those downtowns with the existing condition of Millbrae. Us in San Bruno and San Mateo Avenue do not have business improvement associations. Look at the difference. Compare San Mateo Avenue and Broadway to Laurel Street, to Burlingame Avenue, to downtown San Mateo. And I think that that is self-evident. I understand, I understand the politics. We as staff, we don't want to get in politics. I could vouch for New City America. Again, I've got forty years. One, one of my strengths is turning around downtowns. We used to have redevelopment law. Okay? Well, we don't any longer. And a lot of cities in California are deteriorating as a result of that. Housing isn't being produced. Downtowns are, are becoming blighted, you know, as a result of not having the tool. This is a fin, this is a financing tool. The, the management is, as we've heard, it's up to the people in the district. So it's not to anybody that spoke this evening. With all due respect to, to those people, I get it. But I just think that there's a lot of misinformation. And unfortunately, that misinformation is kind of ballooned up into something that we're losing focus on. And the focus should be on how do we make Millbrae great? How do we get the downtown looking good, appealing to where people want to come in? It's inviting. You saw the photo, Eduardo, can you go to the photo of the before and after of the plaza? Nope, keep going. Keep going. Keep going. Okay, go, okay, so go to the front one. Okay, that's the before. Go to the next one. That's the after. Okay? With our downtown plan and with our densities and everything we're trying to do, that is the vision. That is what, that is what we can do. So if you're disappointed in that and you want that, then this is the way to do it. And, you know, I get it. I, I understand. But sometimes leadership is courage. Sometimes leadership is moving in the right direction for an improvement that a year later, two years later, people will say, you know what? I was wrong. Thank you for doing that. Thank you for moving forward. And again, it, as we said, it, it isn't, the council doesn't have a vote. You're putting the power into the property owners. And, and so what, I asked, I asked the community, what kind of city do you want to be? Go to the last bit. Do you want to be that? Or do you want to be that? Simple. And if one of the residents that keeps asking for a light at Victoria, well, if you want that light, somebody needs to pay for it. And we don't have the money to pay for it. Okay? We've got other priorities. The police department. Yeah, you get what you pay for. We contract with the sheriff. There are two officers, two deputies per shift, you know, on the beat. If, if we want more, well, then we're gonna have to pay more. So this augments, again, depending on what the board that's formed, what they want to spend their money on. Additional safety, beautification, street cleaning, those things that, that are above and beyond what this city can afford to do. And, and so I hope that answers your question. Sorry, I'm a little bit passionate on this because with all due respect, and I know everybody out there, I disagree with them. I've been involved in forty years of turning downtowns and, and, and communities around for the better. And, and I believe in this and I think it's a first step that we need to move forward. If not, then it's a choice of the property owners. Then we'll have to go to Plan B and continue to struggle and hear the complaints of the look and feel of downtown Millbrae.
Thank you, City Manager Williams.
Okay. Anyone else on the council? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Thanks everyone for all the comments. You know, I, I agree with the mayor and Councilmember Rinaldi that I think we should remove the condominiums from the district. And I think in terms of a couple of other tweaks of the map, if we're, if now is the time to bring those up.
Yeah.
I mentioned earlier, the last block of Hemlock Avenue, which is a single-family residential. I believe on Park Boulevard and Park Place, I believe there are some residential parcels there as well. So we might want to double check those. And I, I would recommend removing those from the district, the, the proposed district. And in terms of district zone one versus zone two, the mayor mentioned potentially moving some from zone two into zone one. Mentioned the Lucky's.
Friendship Plaza.
Friendship Plaza and the Lucky's site.
Basically Al Camino frontage, like for example, you see this map here. You know, you get the Friendship Plaza, you get those, the Old Flower Lounge.
Oh, yeah, I would say the Hong Kong Flower Lounge property as well.
And those fronting, you know, the Chase Bank, those fronting, Al Camino Real. Those are some of those opportunities, you know, even properties between California Drive and, and now Camino Real on the south side of Millbrae.
Yeah, I would also suggest the, the Weston and Aloft Hotel property.
They withstand to benefit from establishment of the CBD. So, you know, for them to be a part of the zone one would make sense.
Yeah, those are pretty large. It's a pretty large site. And, you know, I think echoing some of the comments from the city manager, oh, oh, sorry. One other question I had for Mr. Lamondry. In terms of the, the governance structure and the board that would be created. So can you please go over again how exactly the board itself would be formed? Would that be like a weighted vote of the property owners or how exactly would that be done?
So normally what happens is after the district is formed, we try to get all the core people who are familiar with the district, really invite anybody who's interested to be on the board. It's interim board of directors because the bylaws would normally say you cannot be on the board until you've paid your full assessments. Well, if the district is formed summer, the assessments will come in December twenty twenty-five and April twenty twenty-six. You won't know that until June if someone is fully paid. So you create an interim board of directors with interim officers until such time you could demonstrate that someone is fully paid.
And, and sorry, who, who is you? Who, who does that?
The whoever is coordinating everybody afterwards, whether it's me or anybody else.
Or the city or?
Or the city, whoever, that entity, whatever is gonna happen. And I want to clear up too, that a condo owner has just as much right to be on the board and have one vote as somebody who is paying tens of thousands of dollars. It's one property owner, one vote after the establishment of the district. The weight only occurs in the formation process because that's dictated by the state constitution.
Okay, so then, but for actually voting for the board members, it's one property owner, one vote.
Yeah, and there will be an interim board because at that point, we want to make sure that there's people who can at least, when the revenues come in, they can start to implement those services as quickly as possible. Once you've gotten to the early summer of twenty twenty-six and you've demonstrated that people have paid their assessments, that's their ticket. And normally with the way we've set up boards in the past, it's two-thirds property owner, one-third what we call community at large, which could be business tenants or residential tenants within the district. So it's not all property owners because some of the businesses are paying through pass-throughs and they see what's going on on a day-to-day basis.
And typically, how many members are there on one of these boards?
Usually do we, we propose a range between seven and twenty-seven. I have no idea how many people want to be on the board. So that's not up to me. But if you hit a set number of, say, there must be thirteen and you only have twelve, then you're, you're violating your bylaws. You try to give them a range because there might be some day, some years when there's a lot of activity and other years when there's not that much activity.
Okay, yeah, twenty-seven seems like a lot to me. But anyways, just to kind of sum up, I think, you know, I grew up here in Millbrae. I've been here since nineteen ninety-one. I know since, you know, for thirty or forty years, people have been talking about what can we do to improve downtown? What can we do to improve downtown? And, you know, there are a lot of sort of half measures that were done, such as, you know, planting the palm trees on the corner. We did some beautification projects, did utility block box paintings. But there was nothing, there was never really a plan to, and there were also things that were tried that didn't succeed. Like for example, at one point, there was a proposed moratorium on new restaurants downtown and that failed. But there was never really a plan for how, what we can do, you know, tangibly to improve the downtown. So in my opinion, I think we can't really afford not to do this, to at least give it a try. You know, if it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out. It's not a permanent structure. But as was mentioned, nearly every downtown in the area that is a vibrant place that people want to go to, whether it's Burlingame, San Mateo, Redwood City, going down the peninsula, Palo Alto, Mountain View. Those are all, I think pretty much all of those are community benefit districts. Cities that don't have community benefit districts, Millbrae, San Bruno, Belmont, which doesn't really have a downtown, Oster City doesn't really have a downtown. So I think it's, you know, it's definitely a common denominator in terms of what makes a downtown vibrant. So I think it's some, it's something worth trying. I think, again, it's not the council imposing it. The property owners would have to vote to approve it. And if they do, great. It would be wonderful to see how this could potentially take shape. If not, you know, so be it. That's the prerogative of the property owners. But I appreciate all the work that New City America has done to get us to this point. I think we're very close to, you know, with the petition, we'll find out whether we have the support to then advance to a vote, which would take, require further action of the council at that time. So that's where I'm coming from at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else? Last member, Wayne.
I get the, I get the benefits. It makes sense. We want to improve our downtown. There's no argument from me. What I have challenge believing is that we, we paint a good picture here with the slides you gave. But what I want to see is the times where it didn't work out. And then why didn't that work out, right? To build a better objective picture. And I didn't see that today. It was just, okay, look at this, great. I mean, this, these are great success stories. But I'm just concerned that we're gonna slip into a slight survivorship bias. The ones that make it get talked about. And I would like to see the, the stories where, or even like the finances, what happened, right? When, when it didn't work out. And at least give us a contingency or at least some kind of look ahead where, you know, if it doesn't work out, we can take that Plan B or something like that. But I didn't see that today. So I, I would support it. It's just, there's a lot of details and I don't, I want to, I'm very hesitant about the business order to make a quick decision on this. Obviously for the hopes of improving business district, but at the same time, there's other side of the risk, right? If it doesn't work out. And then now you have this, this overhead that you have to deal with without the benefits. Like essentially the ROI, which I think one of the callers talked about. So that would really give me confidence in this district if the ROI is measurable and we can prove that with like all the other success stories that we had.
If I can just comment on that, your ROI, your ROI is gonna be manifested in things like increased sales taxes, increased sale, hotel taxes, as well as reduction in any type of vacancies and new developments. So that's where you're gonna see the return. So that's been my experience too. If you see, we can. so that's been my experience too, if you see, we can look at charts and say, things went up in certain areas and they fl- flatlined in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, went up again, and then COVID, down, and now they're coming back again, and I would tell you, as someone who has formed a lot of districts, we don't manage all the districts, it always comes down to management, running a city is based upon management, running a business is based upon management, this is no different, so whoever they're gonna hire to manage the district, it needs to be someone who has got qualifications in doing this, knows Millbrae very well, and I would trust the people who are gonna be on that board to make decisions that are in their best interests, as well as the best interests of the city as a whole.
And Mayor, I I have a story to share, a real story, you may be familiar with this, but Burlingame Avenue, I believe it was in the mid-eighties or late-eighties, uh formed a business improvement district, due to, and I I don't know if anybody remembers Burlingame Avenue at that time, um, it wasn't what it is today, um, so things were moving, you know, they started to do some improvements on sidewalks and some landscaping, beautification, there was a, then there was a disagreement with some of the property owners, um, they decided to disband the district, and I believe that that was maybe in the mid-nineties, um, things really started to deteriorate, they went back and they formed the district, and now you see what the evolution of reforming that district has now brought to Burlingame Avenue, so that that's a a true story that I am aware of, they started, and it what didn't have anything to do with the amount of the assessment, it was disagreement between some of the major property owners, a lot of fighting as I understand it, um, they decided to disband the district, and again, they saw the deterioration, Burlingame Avenue decline, they said, hey, we need to do something, they mean in the property owners, they reformed the district, got their act together, and you know, obviously, you can see the fruits of the labor now in Burlingame Avenue.
Yeah.
So I I know that's a true story of a of of when it was not successful, um, but then realizing that whoops, this is a great tool, we need to, we need to bring it back.
It would be great to understand the differences and implementation too, like CBD is a big topic, right, it's very general, but like in the case of Burlingame, I heard San Mateo, what were their implementations compared to ours, right, did they go to New City, did they go to uh, did they do different types of tax structures, like taxing business licenses instead of a property owner, like those are details I'd need to see to to get better confidence on this idea of CBD.
Yeah, so so that's a great question, and Marco, if I, you know, feel free to correct me or or add to this, but w- w- why did we come up with seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we we could have gone higher, um, we could have proposed an assessment much higher than that, but knowing that the capacity of our property owners to pay, we were sensitive to that, if we went any lower, it wouldn't be worth forming the district, we we are at the very lowest assessment to make the district feasible, so if we go any lower, it's it's not gonna be worth it, we can't fund anything, um, so we're right at the, you know, very minimum of the assessment and the amount of revenue, you know, that's received to to augment the the improvements and services um to 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 make it viable, um, and so we were very sensitive in the amount of assessment as it relates to the burden on our on our property owners, so that was all very thoroughly analyzed.
It was mentioned earlier about sales tax data, right, as our metric potentially?
I believe it, it's a it's a good metric, yes.
Is that data we could see for other cities or uh?
Uh, yeah, we're trying to figure out, did you hold geo-fencing of certain areas, so once we do that, and I think I'm pretty close to doing that, we used to have somebody in the city of San Diego that would do it for us, and they're no longer there, but once we figure that out, you just sort of get your base year and then you watch the sales tax come in, because this is probably the only area within the city that's generating sales tax because the rest of the city is predominantly residential, so it'd be probably it pretty easy to set a baseline year and watch it go up.
Yeah, a- a- and and to that point too, there's there's retail sales leakage, right, so how much, you know, do you, how much is the buying power, you know, in our trade area, and how much does that leak out to other business districts, and that's another metric that we can monitor is is improvement in the sales leakage, which which is indicative then of the sales tax increase, of course, but there's a little bit of a subtle metric on the two of those that we would that we could monitor.
Yeah, I think if we can show that uh with similar cities, similar sized makeup, I don't want to say demographic, but just like setup in Millbrae, then that could go a long way in uh gaining confidence on buy-in for CBD versus like, you were just gonna do it, I guess, so I, sales tax or just any metric would would be very helpful.
I I will work on at least the districts that we manage and come back to the city manager and Andy with some of that information as soon as we can figure out that process, because usually that's all proprietary, you can't disclose what someone's sales taxes are unless you geo-fence it, and then you can try to figure out where were they, and I would use like two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-four is really the metric because we know what happened uh five years ago.
Uh, also, if you guys have potential access to this data, is the businesses that closed or new businesses that moved in, I think that would be useful as well.
Yeah, that'll be much more difficult to to ascertain, I I know the districts that we're completely involved in, we have, I can count the vacancies, but there aren't that many, they're pretty strong areas coming back, there are other areas, I think as Tom said too, that aren't gonna come back or it's gonna take a really long time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any anyone else? Okay, all right, so uh let me just kind of sum it up a little bit, I think, listen to all the comments and and this robust discussion, also listen to the city managers as well, and I understand how passionate this is to all of us and how sensitive an issue it is to all of us, um, I I think as this new council gets seated, you know, from December tenth of last year, there has been a lot of discussions and focus about where the city is gonna go and how we're gonna focus our next two years, there's a lot of optimism coming into this new council, and and I will, and I will say that, you know, economic development is on our agenda, ensuring that this is an opportunity for us to finally revitalize our town ta- downtown and deliver the promises that we've seemed to have promised ourselves for nearly two decades, um, things that we envisioned, that we wanted to change, we want to realize the potential, that this being a transit center, um, life science and life science center of the Bay Area, right, we've we've come to realizations of that relatively quickly here, uh, and in order for us to really, you know, um, be effective in our economic development, the multiple strategy need to come in, and this CBD is just one of the many that needs to happen, parking strategies, um, we talk about density bonus programs, local density bonus program, uh, making permitting more transparent, make it easier for people to open businesses in Millbrae, making it easier for folks who want to develop in Millbrae so that they have a sure and and certain pathway to become successful in Millbrae, um, better public safety investments so that everyone feels safe in Millbrae, so that people will want to come out and shop and dine and um and congregate, um, you know, making a place for gathering, making Millbrae a place for destination on a Thursday, Friday, Saturday evening, um, running different events so that we can bring people together, make people feel like they can enjoy themselves here, um, it, those are all the tools that we need to put in our toolbox and all the strategies that need to kind of work together if we're serious about making the changes that we envision, uh, what Millbrae can be and what Millbrae must be, say, five years from now, ten years from now, but the work has to be done today and it takes the political will to make those decisions today, and I heard that loud and clear, and I understand how important this decision is, um, but also, you know, we don't lose focus on, you know, how affordability becomes a big problem for a lot of the property owners here, especially some of the smaller um homeowners, so I think the move that we're making today is it's represents our sensitivity to those homeowners who live here, uh, some of those might be on fixed incomes and and own a small condos and just want to have a good quality of life, um, but yet, we don't lose sight of sort of the overarching goal of doing economic development, revitalizations, and expanding our local economy from here, because we all want Millbrae to be more successful than where we are today, and this is one of the many things that we need to do and we know we need to get it done, um, so this is high on a priority list to get done, and so I think some of the compromises that we make tonight, you know, adjusting the map, taking some of the condo owners out, um, but finding ways to augment some of those losses, um, I think, you know, in the upcoming days and weeks, we can try to tweak that a little bit more if possible.
It's possible.
Yeah, I I know it is, and and I'm gonna challenge our good consultant here because you've formed almost a hundred district now.
Yes.
By the time we keep talking about it, it'll be more than a hundred, so we gotta find a way to augment some of those uh some of those losses, um, so that, you know, the the budget that we came up with, I understand it's been well thought out and it's minimal but still effective, so finding ways to between the maps and and try to, you know, amend some of those orange into white districts and to make it, um, um, you know, to make up some of those losses, for lack of better words, so that's what I would challenge a consultant and and our staff to do, um, so that we can move forward with this, because this is important for Millbrae, so this is what I will leave it at, um, do we need to take any actions, I think, do you got enough directions from the council here, city manager?
Uh, yeah, Mayor, and I'll I'll make a note of that, so we advertise this, you know, it's an information item, but it is noticed as an action item.
Sure.
And it's for this purpose, so it sounds like there's direction and we would need a motion and a second and a vote, um, this evening, uh, to um remove the condominium owners, uh, remove the parcels on Hemlock and add in um the Weston Aloft properties and the Friendship Plaza uh from Zone Two to Zone One.
Correct, and some of the properties over on the the Flower Lounge, also the west side, east side of Alcamino Real, um, south of Millbrae Avenue.
Cor- correct, yeah.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, and and there's a little strip of orange that with three five five next to it, what what was that about, is that the um, that's where the train station is, isn't it?
No, that's um, so that is where Lucid and um.
No, that's, no, no, that's before, that's west of one oh one.
Oh yeah, no.
That's the train station, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
That's Cow Trains right away?
Cow Train.
It's a Cow Train parking lot, so Cow Train is paying for that?
Uh, anybody, all the parcels that are listed here, orange or blank, are included in the assessment.
Okay, make it Zone Zero if you can, I'm just kidding, so, um, but that's, those are the changes that I would propose we make, um, anything else, this council? Councilmember Nguyen?
This is, this motion is just to accept the report, what is it?
This is to accept the report and um making those changes that we discussed, you know, as a direction to take the um condominium, residential condominium owner out of the district from the assessment, so they don't have to pay, um, and then making some of the changes between Zone Two to Zone One to try to help augment some of those losses um from the forty-four thousand.
Okay, understood, uh, what about the?
And the Hemlocks as well.
What about information for uh, like I asked earlier, uh, breakdown on the on the administrative, would this also be included?
You'd be more specific?
Yeah, it's in the plan right now, but I can articulate it if you want greater detail, it's not a problem.
I think greater detail would be great.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, and also, um, also the single-family lots on um Park Boulevard and Park Place, if we can identify which ones those are.
Oh, there's some single-family homes there?
There are, yes, yeah.
And also the city-owned parking lot, which is in the middle of the triangle.
You keep the parking lot in, right?
Well, the, yeah, sure, why not?
It's a parking lot.
Okay, um, yeah, I think take take some of the single-family property out of there, probably is a, the right thing to do, but keep the commercial property in there. Okay, anything else, ladies and gentlemen?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to explain.
Thank you, New City America, thank you for your time, go ahead.
So so if the council is directing this, we we do need a motion and a second and a vote.
Okay, what what, I mean, we talked about a slew of things here, but um, we got everything here, we've been on the same page, I'm happy to make the motion for all those changes that we discussed, taking out the um residential condominium owners from the assessment, uh, the Hemlock property, um, single-family home along Park Boulevard, um, and Pop Place, I think, um, and um upzoning from Zone Two to Zone One on the Friendship Plaza, the Old Flower Lounge, and the east side of Alcamino Real and west of the train track, that whole orange district, but between three fifty-one, three fifty-five, and three fifty-two, I think those are census tract, isn't it, that we have designated?
Mr. Mayor, are you talking about that, I can't read the number, but?
Yeah, three fifty-five, three fifty-one, three fifty-two, that whole area.
And I thought you were also talking further.
Oh, and and also the um, and also the Aloft and the Weston.
Yeah, and then that little slice of orange, see right there, it uh where the, are you talking about those parcels as well?
So those are Adrian, um.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, those that that's Lucid and those inline properties, um, Lucid is really the only business that's there, mo- most of the other properties are pretty deteriorated, um, it's vacant, um, but I just wanted to.
Mr. Mayor, I'd recommend keeping that area in Zone Two since it doesn't really have any type of an active frontage.
Okay, I I just wanted to make, I just wanted clarity.
No, I think I think the mayor was talking about the area around um Millbrae Avenue and Alcamino, right?
Where nothing but cakes, there's a condominium there, yeah, okay.
Correct, those are, there's, there's all these commercial um property there and.
Yes.
And also the Cow Train right away.
Cow Train also. The bank.
Well, they own the train, train parking lot, say again, the heel of the boot, that is really the heel of the boot.
Yep.
Okay, that's the motion, and we have a second from Councilmember Ronaldo, and Councilmember Nguyen, you have a final comment?
Just for clarification, so uh we're accepting, this is the motion to accept the report, what are the uh, I guess, sequence of uh events after this?
Um, sequence of events?
Once the petition drive hits its thirty percent threshold, we'll give it to the city manager, city manager, then we'll submit it to the city council, and then at that point with the staff report, they would uh adopt what's called a resolution of intent, and that would instruct the city clerk to mail out uh all the ballots to all the uh property owners, excluding, of course, the people that or the parcels that you had proposed for exclusion, and then at that point, there's a minimum of forty-five days that that ballot must be in the hands of the property owners, and then we set a public hearing date probably by the end of July because the county needs to be made aware if it's gonna be on the tax rolls by early August, so we gotta get the end of July and back up pretty.
Where does the city council vote now, was it, you said intent, the, is there any more city council action after this?
There is a resolution of intent, which authorizes the ballots go out, and then you set a public hearing date in which the ballots are counted, ballots come back, and if they, if their weighted response is supportive of the district, then the council would be asked to adopt a resolution of formation, which places the assessments on the property tax bills for the next uh fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
And and Mayor, if I may, just just for further clarification, very much like the fire assessment, um, the city clerk gets the ballots, they're all sealed, and then we have an open meeting that any member of the public can attend, and they, we count the ballots um in front of the public, um, we do it here in the council chambers, it's open, anybody can come in and witness, um, and uh, so it's not, my point is not behind closed doors, it's all open, it's all transparent.
Yeah.
And and so that's how the votes are counted, unlike a regularly scheduled election, since it's a property-based election, it's ran through the city, um, and that's, that's how we count the votes.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second, and the motion is clear to the staff and the public?
Clear to staff, Mayor.
Thank you, all right, your vote, please.
Item number fourteen, passed by a vote of five zero with um amendment from the city council.
Thank you very much.
Also, I, you know, to to note, um, Councilmember Nguyen's um request for information, um, we will be working on that and we will be bringing it back um to the council, either through a memo, or we'll place the item on the agenda for information and and get that data.
Yeah, and and just for, yep, sorry, sorry to interrupt, um, but just for the benefit of the public as well, there'll be a walking tour tomorrow at one P M. in front of the Leonatos and the Bank of the Orient, that pla- in front of the Leonatos and the Bank of the Orient, that plaza out there. And all these questions can, you know, we can discuss this all over again with consultant. They'll be there, ready to answer all your questions.
Yeah, and I,
So you can get all the facts.
I hope we have a large attendance.
Yes.
And many people show up, so we're looking forward to it.
Excellent, sounds good. Thank you all. Item number 15, adoption of a resolution awarding a construction contract to Suarez and Munoz Construction for the Bayside Manor Park, Bayside Manor Park renovation project in the amount of $1,318,171, establishing a project contingency of 15% of $197,730 for a total project budget of $1.5 million, $15,901, and authorizing the city manager and designated to execute a contract and all contract change orders up to the project budget actions. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce our city engineer, Mr. Ahmad Haye, for the staff presentation this evening. Ahmad.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
Ahmad Haye, City Engineer, and I'm here to present the Bayside Manor Park renovation project, which is being prepared to proceed to the construction phase. The Bayside Manor Park is less than one acres. The 0.8 acre park is located within the Bayside Manor and Avedore neighborhood, as seen on the map on the left. The photo on the right is showing the entrance to the park. There's a single entrance on Larita Avenue, the end of Larita Avenue. The park has not been renovated for over 25 years. The photo on the left shows the field and the playground. You can see the conditions of the field on the image on the left. And on the image on the right, on right, is the basketball court. It's just one single basketball court for the whole park. And early 2023, the city went to, did an outreach for both the Bayside, sorry, Bayside Manor Park and the Marina Vista Park, and the community made it clear that they wanted a park that was more welcoming and functional for recreation and enriching the community's quality of life. The goal is to do what was completely accomplished from Marina Vista Park, which was open last month and want to revitalize that park. And the way to do that is by providing new amenities and increasing the park capacities, which I will discuss in the next slide. There will be new irrigation sprinklers with gopher barriers. There will be additional trees, ground cover, and flowers. There'll be now two basketball courts, as I mentioned, and there'll be a fenced playground with swings and PlayStation. There will also be a picnic area that will have a shade structure, benches, grills, picnic table, and a drinking fountain. And also it's important to note, there's a fenced pet run area now with a dog waste station and also a water station. This exhibit shows the layout of the park relative to the site. As you can see, this, this plan incorporates the, what council directed in May 28, 2024, includes the pet run on the left side. That's the unleashed area for dogs and other animals. With this new redesign, our consultant redesigned it, and we went to bid in January 24, 2025. This project was advertised for a month, and we received five bids on February 27, 2025. The lowest bid came at $1,318,171, which is within the engineer's estimate. The low bid was to Suarez and Munoz Construction, which also happens to be the APWA, or American Public Works Association's Contractor of the Year for 2024. There are sufficient funds to pay for the construction contract, including a 50% contingency. We have secured two funding, two grants, thanks to the efforts of Diane Pappan and State Senator Josh Becker. The first grant we had is this California National Resources Agency grant in the amount of $187,025. We were pleased to find out earlier this month, or actually I think it was last month, that we also had an additional grant from the California Department of Parks and Recreation for $150,000 for this project. This was in today's council item number six, the resolution to obtain the grant. That was the one that we just found out. And this was not, it's important to note that we did not include this in the budget for this year, so this is additional funds. The actual total grants of both of these is $300,000. Half of it goes to Bayside Manor Park, and the other half goes to Marina Vista. We have also additional funds from the general fund, and we intend to also use the development impact fees to pay for the park. Given that there's sufficient funds and we have a good bid results, staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution to order construction contract to Suarez and Munoz in the amount of $1,318,171, establish a project contingency of 15% for $197,730, and to authorize the city manager or designate to execute the contract and all contract change orders up to the project budget of $1,515,901.
Okay, thank you, Ahmad. Any questions or comments from this council? It's a great park. And it's good to, we got a good amount of funding from the state to do it. Thank you, the assembly member and the senator for their contributions and their assistance. Councilmember Rinaldi?
Yeah, just can I echo that and say, thanks. Really excited to see what they do with this park. The last park came out fantastic. So special thanks to, to the elected officials that helped with some of the funding. So, really excited.
Any other comments? How about public comments on this item?
Mayor, I do not have any speaker slip or any hands raised online.
Okay, all right. If there's no further comment, happy to entertain the motions for approval. Any last-minute comments? Your votes, please.
Item number 15, passed by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ahmad, and thank you, our assembly member and our senators. All right, new business. Item number 16, adoption of a Millbrae age-friendly action plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce our recreation director, Ms. Hannah Moran, for a staff presentation and introduction of our consultant that we've been working with on the development of this plan.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and city council members. Tonight, we actually have two consultants with us, so they will be doing the presentation. So I want to introduce Anne O'Brien and Cynthia as well, from the Center for Age Friendly Excellence. They've been working with us on this action plan for a while, so thank you.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Hannah mentioned, my name is Cynthia Nakayama from the Center for Age Friendly Excellence, or CAFE, and I'm joined by my esteemed colleague, Anne O'Brien Kegren. We truly enjoyed working with your city and your age-friendly task force, the Senior Advisory Committee on the action plan, and we appreciate the opportunity to be able to talk to it, to you, talk to you about it tonight, as well as provide some background. Oh, okay. We've already changed. Okay, thank you. When the World Health Organization first realized that the older adult population had grown exponentially, they decided to do a worldwide study on the unmet needs of older adults. And what they realized was that there are eight main domains or categories where there are unmet needs. So WHO established in 2010 a network, an age-friendly network, and it now has over 1,700 towns and communities, over 60 countries, and over 330 million people. This network serves as a platform for cities to be able to share their best practices, learn from each other's experiences, as well as to collaborate in order to come up with innovative solutions to approach the challenges of the aging population. Next slide, please. You may already be familiar with the age-friendly domains, but I'll just go through it. Outdoor spaces and buildings, transportation, housing, social participation, communication and information, respect and social inclusion, civic participation, and employment, and community support and health services. The age-friendly plan encompasses a five-year process, and this is all about information gathering and assessment. The document acts as a roadmap so that the city can approach their new initiatives in order to make the city a better and better place to grow old and to thrive. It includes, it includes the unmet needs that emerge from the focus groups and assessments, as well as the potential solutions and strategies that came out of it. Recently, Millbrae conducted a worldwide, a citywide survey with AARP, and it was promoted quite widely. This included hard copies of the ARP survey to the monthly, I guess there were only the four monthly senior lunches, weekly self-help for the elderly lunches, as well as the senior classes and the San Mateo Daily Journal Senior Showcase event, and also two senior line distributions. This covered about 600 seniors in total, and 159 surveys were collected. This is quite a few, since AARP will not allow you to count the survey unless every question is answered. Initially, Millbrae had five focus groups, and these covered, and this was in 2022, before they became, you became age-friendly certified in September of the same year. The categories covered older adults from 55 to 74, older adults from 75 and older, Asians, 55 and older, including an interpreter, a task force group that includes community leaders and advocates, 55 and older, as well as the underserved population that is 55 and older. We also conducted three focus groups and a town hall in 2024. These included task force members, self-help for the elderly members, and there was also one Chinese focus group that was held in Chinese. The service providers and residents all held, we all, we held in-depth discussions with them in order to discover the unmet needs in the older adult community from their perspective. And based on these discussions, we came up with priorities in how to determine the potential projects that would be included. This entire list of unmet needs and potential solutions is included in the action plan in Appendix A, and there will be a link to that information because it is such a big spreadsheet. In order to become an age-friendly community, Millbrae focused on some inaugural projects. And some of these are to create a city electronic newsletter, which made it much easier to disseminate information more quickly to a broader audience. And this includes services, activities, events, and other resources. Also, to establish a database of both seniors and those that are disabled, which is important in an emergency, in case of evacuation. They also researched Singapore's Green Man Crossing, which is a device where, whereby the senior can go up to a crosswalk, tap their ID on the device, and it automatically extends the time by three to 13 seconds, depending on how far the crosswalk is. They also, you also increase enforcement at certain intersections to help increase safety of auto and pedestrians. Some of the intersections that came up were, let's see, Magnolia and Taylor, Richmond and Magnolia, Helen and Magnolia, downtown at Broadway and Library Lane. There was also a project to disseminate information about transportation options, and also to consider a transit that would possibly be a pilot program to provide transportation for the disabled to the community events. Also pedestrian safety was a factor, and as has been mentioned a few times tonight, to look at lighting that was needed at certain places. Also, the font size at street signs, because sometimes it's too hard to see, and also painting street names and numbers on the street. The city also discussed writing a letter to Bart because it's very important for riders to feel safe and comfortable when they ride Bart. So we want to make sure that people know that the action plan is a living document. It is not static or set in stone. It is dynamic and continues to evolve so that if any modifications are made, or changes are made to plans or regulations, that these can be revised. All of the information was, came out of the information from your community. Last, last, last of all, the focus group discussions, even though they covered the eight domains of livability, CAFE also added a ninth category of emergency preparedness because of all the recent increasing disasters that have been happening and the need to be prepared for them and for the awareness to increase, especially among seniors. We also did many interviews with department staff and department heads in the various departments. And now Anne will talk about the strategies in the different domains.
Good evening, Mayor Fong, Vice Mayor and council members. I'm going to piggyback on my colleague Cynthia. I do want to emphasize that this information that we received really came from your community. The focus groups, the staff interviews. I also want to mention that we had the privilege to be able to work with former Mayor Enio Leva, and also former Mayor Gina Pappan through this process. So we first started with the certification and then graduated on to the action plan. And just to give you a little bit brief background, too, CAFE has also, we have, you know, 20 cities in San Mateo County. We have certified 17 of them. And then in regards to action plans, we have certified or are in the process of certifying eight. So I am going to focus on, next slide, please. I'm going to focus on outdoor spaces and buildings, the domain number one. And so basically, you have a 79-page document. So of course, we're not going to go through 79 pages of document, but we picked a few things on each domain just to focus on. So the ultimate goal is to provide safe, accessible indoor and outdoor environments in the community of all residents to relax, enjoy, and socialize. And a few of the strategies that we came up with, we basically suggest that older adults develop walkability audits, where they can identify dangerous areas and suggest improvements. This could be assessing potential crosswalk improvements, cracks in the sidewalks, painting of street names, making sure the font is big enough on streets, the street signs, making sure there's enough light so people can see when they're walking and driving. Also, we encourage that both in the residential area and the business area. So it was very interesting to hear your earlier conversation in regards to economic development in your businesses. As my colleague and I were saying, you can definitely take this age-friendly plan and incorporate it into your downtown, downtown improvements because you want to increase that vitality. We want to encourage business owners to support pedestrian safety initiatives by keeping the sidewalks clear, clean, and placing business signs in areas that don't block pedestrian passage. We also want to advocate for the Sheriff's Department to increase enforcement at dangerous intersections that are mentioned throughout the plan. We want to promote education around driver, pedestrian, and road, pedestrians in regards... in regard, and bike safety, especially with kind of the newer mobility modes such as electric bikes. Want to utilize park and open spaces to promote relaxation, socialization, health and wellness and programming opportunities. There was also a discussion of the possibility of developing a senior ad hoc subcommittee to research and discuss more comfortable seating that's much more age-friendly, being that furniture might be a little higher up from the ground and a little more cushion. So those are just a couple of things that we focused on, outdoor spaces and buildings. I'll go into the next domain, which is transportation. And basically, the goal with that is enforce traffic safety and improve mobility options for older adults. We really want to educate older adults in regards to transportation resources that are available to them throughout San Mateo County. One of the most successful options is the Got Wheels Program. And I'm not sure if any of you have heard about the Got Wheels Program, but it started through the Peninsula Family Services with a couple cities, Daily City being the first city. Basically, they came up with a contract with Sierra Cab, Yellow Cab. And it costs either $5 or $6 a month or for six one-way travel drives for adults, older adults over the age of 70. So I think we started out with three cities. We are now up to 25 cities because they've incorporated the coast. We have seen two cities in the peninsula that actually, you know, this is funded through, you know, commute.org, MTC, you know, other private grants that have come in. But also there are a couple of cities that wanted more of their residents to be able to use this program. And so what they've done is they put aside some money from the general fund that is used solely for their residents to increase the number of residents utilizing the program. There's been waiting lists since this program has started. And so that was kind of one way to alleviate the high demand of some cities to let their residents utilize this program. Also, we've talked about, you know, what is the possibility of partnering with other cities in regards to maybe a shuttle that could be beneficial for multiple cities and not just one city? Because what has happened in a couple of cities that had a shuttle program didn't have enough people utilizing it. And so you may want to consider partnering. So for example, we have found, let's say, Millbrae and Burlingame have done such a great job in developing community centers. But the people who are living, you know, west in the hills are saying, we can't get there. So how do we get them there? We spent, you know, spent all this money for these great facilities for our whole community utilized, but they can't get there. So that's one way of incorporating that. You can also maybe include Hillsborough into that. Next slide, please. I know it's late, so I'm going to try to condense this a little bit more. Okay. We are going into the housing to provide resources and options for older adults to age in place in addition to gathering input from residents on future housing policies. I know Millbrae has been doing actually a very good job increasing the density in their city and also incorporating ADUs. So we really encourage trying to educate the community in regards to how you build an ADU, how do you streamline that process, process so it's easy for them to understand? And then how do you disseminate the information of available ADUs that are in your city? Next slide. We have social participation, which is a very popular domain amongst our focus groups. I will say they have been very positive in regards to your park and rec department heads. And in all in all, they have basically said that the activities are, they enjoy them, but they would like to see more if possible. They also want to see more intergenerational programs. And so we were encouraging, you know, ways to have your Yak Committee work with your senior advisory committee. So they work in tandem with each other. So they they are getting a community that's a little more holistic approach rather than one population versus another population. I heard that the intergenerational activity you did have in November, the Trivia Pursuit, was a huge success. And our senior advisory board was very happy that they were actually the winners. Next slide. Communication and information. This is probably the domain that most cities have the most difficulty with because we all feel, you know, sitting on council. And I vouch for this since I did sit on the Burlingame City Council for 17 years. That is, you think you're disseminating all the information you need. And it's amazing that probably the majority of the population still doesn't know what's what's going on in the city as, you know, you may try your best, but it's really hard to reach out to everyone. So you want multiple ways of distributing information and of course, in multiple languages. We had suggested, you know, electronic billboards, leaving information at your civic buildings, but also your library and also coffee houses where people actually hang out. Or there may be the breakfast place that many people go to, like Millbrae Pancake House, where a lot of the older adults will convene and chat with each other. And if it's available right there, it's easy for them just to pick it up. Of course, your older adults, most of them prefer flyers and make the flyers easy, easy to read, larger font, colorful, doesn't have to have a QR code because most of them are going to say, what in the world is this QR code? Or don't even know what it is. It's basically the who, what, when and where. Simple, concise, because you do want to make sure that population is included in your community. Of course, increase the number of tech classes that are offered. And this is another way you can incorporate your youth advisory committee and also your schools. Kids love technology and it's a great way to pair them up with the older population. So they also have a better understanding of the wisdom our elders have, but also our elders understand a younger generation and really see how they are quite useful in our communities. Let's go to the next domain. Respect and social inclusion. Basically, the goal is to provide an environment that promotes inclusivity and respect for the community's older residents. Basically, you know, straightforward here. Part of it is, you know, offering more of the intergenerational activities, including culturally diverse activities in multiple languages, which Millbrae is very good at doing. Next, domain seven, which is civic participation and employment. The goal being to provide older adults opportunities for continued community engagement through volunteer roles or employment. Some of the strategies that we we talked about was offering civics lessons and continual education on city projects. The self-help group, that was actually the one focus group that really wanted more education on civics in Millbrae. And so they were interested in maybe at their lunches to do it twice a year, to have a council, the mayor and council members, without violating the Brown Act, to really give updates on what the city is doing and then just have a translator present for them so they have a better understanding. You know, at first, you know, I haven't worked with translators a whole lot, but I will tell you, this was the most interactive group that I have been with for for quite some time. And so, you know, we thought, oh, we'll get this meeting done in an hour. It was two and a half hours. And so it was, it was a very good experience to be able to see them chat away and feel comfortable. And so I would strongly encouraging, encourage doing that, you know, future, futuristically. And luckily, I also had the opportunity to be with former Mayor Wayne Lee during that focus group. Second, also a yearly volunteer job fair could be planned and encourage residents to learn about volunteer opportunities. This can be done by partnering with schools, the Chamber of Commerce, the city's committees and commissions, and also maybe San Mateo County nonprofits. They're always looking for volunteers. So it's one way that they can reach out to the community and get them involved. Next slide, please. Domain eight, community support and health services, providing an environment with programs and resources that support aging in the community with a positive quality of life. This is really an area that San Mateo County excels in in regards to resources that are available for older adults. We definitely have the Help at Home Handbook, the Community Information Handbook. And then also promote the awareness of the Peninsula Healthcare District Fitness Center. They do have quite a few older adults that utilize their gym. So it's very good to make sure you disseminate that information. Next slide, emergency services. This was a domain, as Cynthia mentioned, that we added due to the fact it was a a topic that the focus groups all touched upon. So basically, to educate and ensure older adults are aware and included in emergency preparedness operations. Some of this, of course, was to kind of elaborate on the CERT groups here in Millbrae, utilizing Coffee with the Chief to do that a little more frequently at the senior lunches. Also, the Research At-Risk Dependent Person Services Program. That's gone through some of the police departments throughout the peninsula. So something maybe the Sheriff's Department can take on. You can actually register your loved one who may be suffering from dementia, Alzheimer's or some disability so that if an emergency does happen, that there is a list on hand that those people could be contacted. Also providing multiple programs for seniors to avoid scams and fraud because that seems to be changing on a day-to-day basis and it's very hard to keep up with that. But that was one topic that the older adults were very interested in. Also, is there a way to possibly partner with the Chamber of Commerce and your businesses to develop emergency to-go bags for older adults? And not necessarily do backpacks, but do rollers. So it's easier for them to move with mobility if they had to leave their home and come to one of the centers in Millbrae in case there was an evacuation. Next. So there are a variety of appendices through the, at the end of the document. The potential age-friendly projects, that was Appendix A, that basically mentioned almost every project that was discussed in our focus groups. There's 100-plus projects. That is something for the community and the staff to really look at. The next appendix was the current age-friendly practices. This is when we interviewed a variety of staff department heads and wanted to get their viewpoint of what are they doing already that is age-friendly? And what would they like to see futuristically? We did keep in mind that, you know, many of these projects you may not be able to do in the next year or two. It could be five years from now, 10 years from now, depending on budget. So this is why you don't look at this like a master plan or strategic plan. It's really a foundational roadmap for you. So you can add, delete, change the priorities, et cetera. We were very cognizant of budgets and also cognizant of staff time when we put this plan together. And then we just have background of the Millbrae history, city government, the demographic profile, the AARP livability index, and then of course, the acknowledgement and resource page. And I will say, we've also had the pleasure of working with Hannah and Joanne for the, for the last two years, and they have been quite resourceful. Next. So Cynthia touched upon the process. I just want to remind you that in 2022, there was the introduction of the age-friendly initiative that was brought in front of the Millbrae City Council and it was approved. And there was a letter written by former Mayor Anya Oliva that we sent to AARP. And they had looked at Millbrae's application and they had approved it. And so you were certified at that time. Next. And then on February 19th, 2025, the Millbrae Senior Advisory Committee approved the Age Friendly Action Plan created by Center for Age Friendly Excellence. They were quite helpful in giving input on this action plan. We had multiple edits the last few months, but we think we came with a, came up with a really good plan from Millbrae that is easy to understand, concise, lots of pictures of, you know, community members. So it was kind of cool that, you know, the senior advisory group was looking at it. We're like, well, we know that person, we know this person. And they actually read it. You know, we don't want a document that's just going to sit on a shelf and you don't look at it again. So we really wanted to personalize it as much as possible. Next. Any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. It's always good to have you here, Ann.
Yeah.
So anyone on the council have any questions for consultant Ann O'Brien and her colleagues? I'll start, since I'm the one who is most, the soonest to become a senior. It's true. It's one, so I think we've heard quite a bit of discussion earlier today. And you also mentioned that a moment ago, how important it is for us to have language accessibility, especially for our seniors, because we do have a very sizable ethnic community and a lot of them are seniors, a lot of them are immigrant as well. They may not necessarily even use English at home. And so being able to provide them with those assistance, language assistance, language accessibility, it's a big deal. And and we already heard a lot of comment earlier today how language assistance could be beneficial in projecting informations and make sure everybody understands what we're doing and the intent and bring things into positive lights. So that's first and foremost, especially for ethnic community. They're heavy, you know, for us, you know, also for Burlingame as well, I believe, also have a sizable ethnic community all throughout San Mateo County. Because it's my understanding that 40% of the San Mateo County population in itself, it's already immigrant community. So, so that's something that I think we need to continue to focus on. You know, the youth involvement, absolutely. There's no question in my mind that that's important. You know, we do have our youth advisory committee, you know, collaborating with the senior advisory committee even during COVID to get them to, you know, know how to use, you know, cellphone, iPhone with FaceTime, how to get connected with their grandchildren's and their family members to get rid of some of those isolations and be more technologically savvy. And that also goes to the point that you made earlier, you know, what is a QR code? You know, so they're getting our seniors to be a little bit more tech-friendly and savvy, help push some of those initiatives and simplifies our communications with, you know, ways, more than one way to communicate with them so that they can get better information and be able to use technology to better their lives or enhance their lives every day. In terms of, you know, transportation, you know, the RAC Center you discussed a moment ago, I think we got a grant recently to help study programs, to bring about a shuttle program to connect the East and West, how to bring the seniors down to our community center, bring them down to downtown so they can get their medications and how to get to the transit center, and so on and so forth. So those are some of the things that we continue to do and as part of this age-friendly plan, as you identified, how it would benefit our senior community as well.
And so one way to use, sorry, one way to use your volunteers too is looking at faith-based organizations to see if there are volunteer, you know, drivers. Of course, all this has to go through an attorney for liability and so forth, but there are cities that have developed villages that are able, you know, to do that. When you mentioned the languages, we were fortunate to use one of your residents as a translator, Maggie Muay, and she was phenomenal. And so other people that were there that speak proficient English and of course, you know, their native tongue, say, we'd love to be able to volunteer. So it's important to utilize your community members also to accomplish many of these, you know,
Community power.
Absolutely. And, you know, when you're looking at budget, you want to try to save your budget as much as possible. So if you have the wisdom out there and the talent, use it.
So I think, I think it's a great plan, you know, especially, I'm likely to be the earliest to benefit from this bench chair. So to that end, any other questions? I think I see a hand earlier from a public participation, but the hand's down at this point.
There was a hand up, but, oh, there it is.
There she is.
All right, Ann Snyder, please accept the mute.
Hi, thank you, thank you for this. My mom participated in one of the focus groups. My question, and I, it's probably true in every neighborhood in Millbrae, but especially in the lower Highlands or any of the neighborhoods that have city street trees, that lifts the sidewalk. And I will tell you, last year when I had a broken leg and I spent five months in a boot. boot, and I couldn't drive for several months, and I had to walk downtown to get groceries, that even a quarter or a half-inch lift in sidewalk is scary as heck. And for an older adult where falling can break a hip or break a leg, it's even scarier as we get older. I doubt the plan, and I'm sorry I didn't detail it, has a look for those areas with bad sidewalks, that that should be part of a program that looks after people that are older or have disabilities. And I think it's something, I went to your goal setting, I didn't hear any discussion of that. I didn't hear, I did see that in Highlands, there is some capital improvement projects in there, but I hope that those capital improvement projects at least look at sidewalk conditions and trees and how to get more trees, but also make the sidewalk safer for people. It is really scary when you fall and break a leg, having now done that. Thank you.
So to respond to that, I just want to mention that in the action plan, it does mention, as I mentioned here this evening, developing an ad hoc senior committee that would actually do walking audits throughout the city to identify those sidewalks and then work in conjunction with Public Works to develop capital improvement projects, you know, futuristically.
I think we have a walk-in tour tomorrow. Pick it back on that. So any other comment or questions from this council? Thank you for the consultant, for all your help, and just, you know, keep helping Millbury to be more age-friendly. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Ann. Any other, so otherwise, if there's no further comment, I would love to entertain a motion to move things along. It's 10:28. All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Rinaldi and a second from Councilmember Nguyen. Your votes, please.
Item number 16, passed by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to the next item, 17, adoption of a resolution to form friendship city relationship with Taizong, Taiwan. Mr. Mayor, again, our Recreation Director Hannah Moran will provide the staff presentation. Thank you. Hi, Hannah.
Good evening again, everyone. Thank you. So yeah, this is just an item regarding a friendship city relationship with Taizong, Taiwan. Next slide, please. So just for some background, the city of Millbury has established formal sister city relationships with Los Arana, Chile, Masta Malta, and friendship city relationships with Hanyu, Japan, Taishan, China, Ramallah, Palestine, and Dongguan, China. The purpose of pursuing and maintaining these relationships is to further cultural, economic, and local governmental relations. The city of Millbury now has an opportunity to develop an additional friendship city relationship with Taishang, Taiwan. And so on March 28th, 2022, a discussion was placed on the Sister Cities Commission agenda to consider a friendship city with the Zaitan District of Taishan City, Taiwan. And then again, as we moved forward, on October 23rd, 2023, Sister City, the Sister Cities Commission formed a subcommittee for further pursuing the friendship city relationship with Taishang City, Taiwan. And then on January 27th, 2025, the Sister Cities Commission voted to recommend to the city council to move forward with adopting this friendship city relationship. And then on February 7th, we did receive a letter of intent. And again, just to be clear, this is, was sent from the Zaitan District Office. So the relationship would be with the district, the Zaitan District of Taishang City. And the letter of intent was said to promote friendly relations and cultural educational exchanges with the city of Millbury. So as you can see, again, discussions on this started all the way in 2022. And so the Sister Cities Commission has really spent their time with bringing this forward to the full city council. And as Chair Kamira was here earlier, she did mention this, that if this, this resolution was passed tonight, it would be part of their work plan. Thank you. So I know a short presentation, but staff does recommend that the city council adopt a resolution to extend an invitation to the government and the people of Taiwan, Taishang, to participate in a friendship city relationship with the city of Millbury, and for the mayor to act as the official representative in carrying out the relationship. So short presentation, but of course, I'm here for any questions.
Hi, thank you very much for your presentation. I do believe we have.
And Mayor, I just want to note that we did notice there was a typo on the staff report, along with there was a missing attachment. So if you look in the purple folder, and it's also uploaded online, that attachment number one is the resolution, and then letter, the attachment number two is the letter of intent dated February 7th. So I just want to note for the record that it is uploaded on our website and with the changes made, as long, also it is in front of you in the purple folder as well. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk. Thank you, Hannah, for the detailed report there. You know, it's, we have one public comment on this item, unless council have any questions for the staff first. I'd like to bring Mr. Chung. I think this is kind of your pet project here, and so if you could just take the podium, I want to give you as much time as you need to, you know, to tell us everything about
I just want to get this expression. I just want to use this opportunity to thank for the council members and mayor. And also, I would like to be very thankful for the chairperson, Catherine Kimura, and also our subcommittee members, Sam Im and the staff, Hannah Moran and Lauren, they prepared those documents and to make this happen. This is just the first step regarding the adoption of a resolution for friendship city relationship between Taizong and Millbury. And the first step is from, the letter of intent is that from the district, but we are looking forward to the, between the cities, two cities, because the city population is far bigger than our population, but we think it's a, it's a whole of the city. So we form the friendship between, I have been in, I live in Millbury about 25 years, and four, two out of the four of my neighbors are from Taiwan, but there is no friendship city or sister city in Millbury and Taiwan. So this is the first one. I'm very excited and very thankful for this opportunity. Thank you.
All right, thank you, John. If you can just kind of stick around for a little bit. Yeah, so, you know, very appreciate, you know, all the work that you have done and what you have bring forward to all of us. It's a giant step, I will, I will say. Just trying to, you know, look into, as we look forward to this opportunity and how, you know, what was the intent and the plan to nurture this relationship moving forward? Because ultimately, the friendship between the two cities is really the friendship between the people of the two cities. And, you know, what this opportunity might bring, and who is going to support it, if there is an organization behind all of this, what was the exchange so far? I will say that I had never visited Taizong. I would love to do so at some point when the, when the timing was right.
Yeah, they have hospitality, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the only place that I've been to in Taiwan was Yilan, but because they have some of the best distillery there. Well, right now. And so the, the opportunity is great, you know, but I'd love to see, you know, some discussions around, you know, what's the plan to maintain this relationship and nurture this relationship and grow this relationship moving forward? Because ultimately, we want this relationship to be successful, to be, you know, something that we can all participate in. You know, is there an organization behind this? You know, what are some of the plans, you know, with, with Taizong moving forward, if you have any?
Yeah, the subcommittee decided that we first to have that educational and cultural activities between these two cities, and then we develop to the commercial economic. Yeah, and then I think they, they are very similar to our Millbury. Taizong is in the middle of Taiwan. We.
As the name suggested, yes.
Yes, and Millbury is the middle of the Bay Area. Okay, and then this is a high-tech concentrate. Taizong has a TSMC too. TSMC has a lot of location, but one main location manufacturing is in Taizong. So in this area is, Bay Area is very high-tech. All those seven, seven high-tech companies are in the Bay Area. And we, and we have an airport next to our city, and Taizong has an airport too, and then they have a high-speed rail too. So it's a hub of the Taizong, Taiwan, and here, Millbury is like a hub in the United States, west side of Mississippi.
Yeah, and, and, you know, it's, it's obvious that we're still waiting for High Speed Rail to show up in Millbury, hopefully within the next, you know, 120 years. The organization, the question about the organization supporting this relationship, is there an organization there that will continue to? For example, I mean, if some of the officials from, from Taizong, they come over, you know, who is going to host them? You know, what kind of cultural exchange you intend to do? Is there an organization to support and sponsor these relationships, you know, vice-versa? If there is an organization in Taizong that, you know, it's going to be your primary contact? Usually what happens is, you know, when, when a, a successful sister city or friendship city relationship, usually there's a group of folks, right, within, between the two cities that have constant contact and constant relationship from cultural, educational, business, a full dimension of different, you know, contact points and, and, you know, relationship that, you know, that communicated on a regular basis, if not daily, weekly, maybe monthly, and then they host event events and ensuring that this is something that is ongoing. If you can speak to that, if there is any organization between the two cities that, you know, will be the primary sponsor of this relationship?
Yeah, well, I think one of the subcommittee member, Mr. Ye.
Peter.
Yeah, he, he is the consultant of the Foreign Cultural Association, yeah. So he can easily locate those business person and, and I, for example, I mentioned, just now I mentioned, two out of my neighbors are from Taiwan, and one of them is, she, she's also consultant of San Mateo Emerged bilingual education school. And, and one time, San Francisco State professor wants to exchange student, and somehow he, the professor just have the, my neighbor, Mrs. Cole, or Mrs. Cole, she, she had the experience, experience to help the professor to do that student exchange. And I think our chairperson, Catherine Kimura, she also has helped Japanese student and Millbury students do the student exchange. And my another neighbor, Sodasang, she, she is Japanese teacher in Mills High. And I remember one time, we helped the Japanese student to, to stay in the house, to. And I think I have those people to help us to, to do the student educational exchange. And then regarding cultural, I think Mayor Rancome and my wife, they are MCC, so they can, they can have some input on that. So we start, if we start from educational and cultural activity, and then we can expand it. We, we have some, some people, business person, and I have my narrative in Taizong too. And we can, we can gather together to, to do this kind of friendship city. I hope it will be successful.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we all want this to be successful. You know, I would certainly love to perhaps spend a little time meeting some of the folks in Taizong.
Yeah.
And have, you know, just kind of bring about these conversations about this friendship city, and then the opportunity that it might bring in the future. We want all, we all want this to be successful, and there's no doubt that it's, it's fruitful for all of us to see this success. I just want to make sure that I have an opportunity to see them, meet them, and discuss with them, and also bring about some of the folks that you just mentioned a moment ago, you know, how they can support this relationship moving forward. Just from a procedural perspective, I'd like to have an opportunity to participate in some of those discussions before we come to a decision to this. It's important that we make sure that as we move forward, we know where this is going to go and how we're going to get there, you know, as, before we take the first step. So I would love to discuss with you on this, and let's put a plan together as we look forward to this. This is a giant step in the right direction. You know, I think it would benefit all of us to have more conversation on this as we move forward, you know, before we make a decision. So I think this is something that I, I'm, I'm committed to helping you to, you know, moving this.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, to, to continue this conversation here. Anyone else on this council have any other comment? We have a hands, hand raise? You want to, okay, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, just a comment, I think, you know, I'm glad to hear all those ideas that you have in terms of how to make this a fruitful relationship. And I remember about 10 years ago or so, we signed a friendship city agreement with this Taishan, China, and I think there's been almost zero communication with them after that document was signed. So we want to make sure that this is active, that this is vibrant, and continues to have, you know, exchanges of people and exchanges of ideas between the two cities. It looks like a beautiful place and would be very supportive of it. Thank you.
Have you been in contact with the Taipei Economic and Cultural Representative Office here in?
Yeah, I have contacted them, but they just going to Mr. Ye's, the association, the Foreign Cultural Association. So that, and I, I think if, if we can get something to, like a, like a decision resolution, and we have this first step, we can, we can show them, and then we can go further. Otherwise, I, I'm just talking and nothing, no evidence or no proof to show them. So I think we need that, we need this resolution to adopt and go further.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, like I said, you know, we want to make sure that this is a fruitful and productive relationship, and, you know, we've had relationship in some of the other cities, and we'd like to see more engagement and more positive result as part of those relationship. And so therefore, I think, you know, here's my suggestion, John, is that I'll be more than happy to, you know, if you can. than happy to, you know, if you can arrange some of the meetings with some of the counterparts in Tai Chong, I'm happy to meet with them and have a discussion and start the dialogue there and look for those commonality and look for space at which we can collaborate on and build on those relationship as we continue to evaluate how this friendship city resolution needs to move forward. Is that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. So I'd like to make a motion to continue this item and then continue to work with John. Thank you for bringing this forward so that we could, you know, we can bring it back to the council on the plan as to how these two future friendship city hopeful will work together and ensure that this is a continued fruitful relationship.
Yeah, by the way, Peter Ye, Peter Ye, just as I mentioned, he is also our summit committee. So, and through the Peter Ye and Sam Im and our chairperson, Catherine, I think it's very encouraging in the future. And I would contact those, those staff in Tai Chong and to make this friendship to be more fruitful, more, as soon as possible.
Right, yeah, I think we should, we should continue this dialogue on this one. All right, so I think we have a public comment that we need to take. City Clerk?
Ann Snyder, please accept the mute.
Party City Clerk, that was an accident, no comment.
All right, thank you.
Good, all right, thank you. All right, so I'll make a motion to continue this item pending that we have an opportunity to meet with our counterpart in Tai Chong and continue this conversation. If there's anybody who would, any final comment? Anyone who wants a second? Okay, we have a second from Vice Mayor Halliper. Any final comment? Your votes, please.
Item number 17 is continued by the vote of 5 to 0.
Thank you so much, John, appreciate it and looking forward to those discussions.
Thank you.
All right, item number 18. Hopefully, we got the next 10 minutes here. Let's see where's 18. All right, it's the introduction and waive the first reading of an ordinance of the city of Millbrae rescinding Chapter 4.5, Title 4 of the Millbrae Municipal Code relating to bicycles and replacing it with Chapter 4.5 relating to regulated mobility devices. It's the city manager, Tom Williams.
Thank you, Mayor, just to introduce our Director of Engineering and Public Works, Mr. Sam Batista, for the staff presentation.
Director Batista.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members. Next slide, please. So just to give you some background for Chapter 4.50 of Title 4 of the Millbrae Municipal Code, it's called bicycles and it was enacted in 1976. And much of this current code is pretty obsolete and the city no longer issues bicycle licenses or bicycle license plates. Residents have requested staff to rescind various sections of the municipal code related to bicycle licensure. Now with the new trends of micro mobility, staff recommended to rescind the entire chapter and replace it with new language addressing the evolving use of mobility devices. The new language also regulates these devices by prohibiting them from being ridden on sidewalks. Next slide, please. So there is no statewide law in California that prohibits bicyclists from riding on sidewalks, but local governments can set their own regulations. So the following San Mateo County cities prohibit sidewalk biking. Those cities include San Mateo, Foster City, San Carlos, Redwood City, and Portola Valley. In South San Francisco, bicyclists over the age of seven are prohibited from riding on the sidewalk. And in San Bruno, bicyclists over the age of 10 years old are prohibited from riding on the sidewalk. Slide, please. In the city of Burlingame, it is unlawful for any person to ride or operate a bicycle or on the sidewalk in any business district in the city. No bicycle shall be operated on the sidewalk in any of the residential districts when and where the sidewalk is being used by pedestrians. And bicyclists on sidewalks shall be walked in any business district and/or in any residential district when pedestrians are present. Slide, please. So rescinding and replacing Chapter 4.50 would modernize the code and address the different types of regulated mobility devices that are in use today. The definitions, the definition section of this chapter, which will define the different regulated mobility devices is much more extensive and consistent with the California Vehicle Code. So those regulated mobility devices are bicycles, electric bicycles, electric personal system mobility devices, electronically motorized boards and motorized scooters. And this chapter would also prohibit operating and riding these devices on sidewalks or public facilities such as athletic or park fields. Next slide, please. So our recommendation tonight is to introduce and waive the first reading of this ordinance of the city of Millbrae rescinding Chapter 4.50 of Title 4 of the Millbrae Municipal Code relating to bicycles and replacing it with Chapter 4.50 relating to regulated mobility devices. With that, I can answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Director. Council comment from this, questions and comment from this council? Councilmember win.
So the criteria for these mobility devices, do we have like a threshold for like speed, torque? Just curious about?
There definitely are. So the vehicle, the California Vehicle Code does have criteria for what these different devices are, depending on how many horsepower, you know, speed, et cetera. So it is spelled out in the California Vehicle Code.
Are we going to just follow that as our criteria for?
Yes, because they all give us standardization.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you for this. You know, I have gotten complaints about people riding bikes on the sidewalk and didn't realize that it was not already prohibited under our city code. One comment I had and suggestion was, you know, in the staff report, it mentions other cities that have exemptions for kids up to a certain age. I think that's probably a good idea to include in this ordinance. I think it mentions seven years old for South San Francisco, 10 years old for San Bruno. I think up to a certain, I mean, not that the city's going to go around issuing citations to kids for riding on the sidewalk, young kids, but I think up to a certain age, it's probably safer to ride on the sidewalk than on the street and those kids aren't necessarily riding particularly fast, so it's not really a danger to pedestrians. So I would recommend and suggest putting in some type of an age exemption for younger kids. It could be up to 10 or, you know, pretty flexible on what the number is. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? Go ahead.
Also like to add, what Burlingame did was pretty good because it stipulates things you can do. For example, walking your bike, right? I think that's important to put in there as well.
Yes, we can mimic that language.
Sure, thank you.
I don't think we have any public comment on this item, but we've got about five minutes left. What is the council's pleasure? Anyone want to make a motion?
Sorry, so this is a first reading, so it does have to come back to the council?
Well, it's, I think this is wait the first reading and then there's a second reading later. This is an ordinance.
Well, it's waiving the title beyond the first reading. So it's adoption of the ordinance?
Yeah.
And it sounds like there might be one amendment to add the age and then we would bring that back for the second reading in two weeks.
Second reading would require consent?
Second reading regardless.
The second reading would likely be on a consent or something like that, right?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, so this is.
So there's a correction, so the age and then to mimic from Burlingame.
Right, that's if the motion's made, it's a second and adopted, yeah.
Okay, so can we clarify the motion?
Yeah, I would say, yeah, a motion to approve with two amendments exempting children up to, up to age 10 and also including the language from the city of Burlingame, allowing bicycles to be walked on the street downtown.
I think if they're walking it, I think it's relatively safe.
Yeah, to clarify that walking a bicycle on the sidewalk is permitted.
Two feet on the ground?
Yeah.
Okay, you have a second? All right, your votes, please.
Item number 18 passed by a vote of 5 to 0 with two amendments.
Okay, well, we made it, 10:57, and how about 30 seconds on each council members? Good, councilmember win. That's all you got.
Okay, so I've attended to the committee meetings outside of this one. One was the EDAC. That was officially changed from EVAC, which was vitality. So we changed vitality to development, so it's officially, I think, EDAC now. We just reviewed basic parking management plans and worked through like an outreach for essentially working with the Chamber of Commerce on that. And then I've attended for the first time RMCP, the Resource Management Climate Protection, CCG meeting, and essentially, it's pretty interesting. It goes over what we want to do with like EV infrastructure as a region. And one thing that was brought up was hydrogen. So I thought, just personally, I thought hydrogen was like off the table, but apparently not for RMCP. So it's something that I actively investigating and looking into and I'll report more as I learn more about that meeting.
Thank you, councilmember. Who else? Councilmember Rinaldi.
Thank you, Mayor Fun. So outside of, outside of city council, I attended two different committee meetings. First one was with BPAC where we talked about smart city signals with the project goal of improving traffic signal systems throughout the whole city. Also attended a Park and Recs meeting where we talked about the spur trail and the proposed Japanese garden. So it was interesting seeing some of the renderings and learning a little bit more about it. That's it, short and brief.
Thank you. Councilmember Riley.
Hey, I attended many meetings, so I don't want to take it too long for late at night. I just want to share with you, I went to first Millbrae nightclub and it was very good. And I encourage you, bring your family and friends going to nightclub next Friday between 4 to 10 p.m. The address is near the bar, near the Panda Express. Address is 200 Rolling Road and easy to parking. Thank you, good night.
All right, just real quickly here, oh, go ahead, council. Vice Mayor.
30 seconds. Yeah, I attended the CCG meeting, that was two weeks ago, as the alternate member. And there's this discussion about transit demand management planning and how to create a little bit more flexibility to allow cities to work with CCG to get plans approved in a more flexible way. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. Just real quickly here, about 15 seconds. So the TA continued to discuss the four-county plan, multi-county regional transit measure as part of the SB 63. San Mateo County will have an opt, it will require San Mateo County to opt in in order for us to be a part of that. So, you know, we've been having greater discussion on whether or not San Mateo County should be a part of it, so more to come on those. And had an opportunity to read to our fifth grader today at the Millbrae Elementary School District. So that was really fun and get to speak to some of our future young leaders, you know, what it means to be in public office and who they are and who they want to be and who they see themselves to be. So that was wonderful discussion and highly recommend all of us to have an opportunity to go read. You'd be surprised, the kind of question they ask and how in tune they are with everything that's going on around them. It's just, it's just wonderful to see our younger kids these days, all right? So with that, I'll close the meeting tonight at 11:01 p.m. Thank you all.